Okay, it is 6 o'clock, so I will call to order the staff review meeting, which we will be going over the items on the agenda and discussing as staff and commission before we open the meeting at 6:30 to the public. So tonight, this is our staff review meeting for the Murray City Planning Commission. It is 6:00 PM on Thursday, May 6, 2021. Present are Commissioners Jake Pearson, Travis Nace, Sue Wilson, Lisa Mckayvich, Ned Hacker. I don't see Jeremy, but he might be here. And I am Maren Patterson. With staff tonight, we have Zach Smallwood, Susan Nixon, Jared Hall, and I think that's all. So we will start with our agenda. Our first agenda item is our approval of minutes. We had two meetings worth of minutes in our packet, so let's go with our April 1 minute first. Did everyone have a chance to review those, look over that? Any changes, corrections, anything that you would like for those meeting minutes?
The only thing I saw is on page 5, where it talks about the Highland Boys smelter. It's plural Highland Boys on that page, so it's really just a typo that can be easily stricken.
Okay, oh, in the last paragraph, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. It's written Highland Boys, and it should just be what?
Singular, singular, Highland Boy.
Highland Boy.
Boy smelter, strike the S. Okay, that's an easy correction, for sure. Any other for the April 1 meeting? Okay, then let's move on to the April 15, 2021 meeting. And those minutes were, they looked really good. Did anyone find any corrections, errors, things that you would like changed in those meeting minutes?
Can I just make a general comment? I'm glad that you guys chose to continue the Larry H. Miller. So thanks for doing that, because I might have something to say about it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Travis.
Yes, thank you for that. I agree. I obviously, as we continue them, and hopefully we'll see them back soon and be able to talk to them. So any other comments or anything about those minutes?
We just did get an email from Jeremy that he's going to be about five minutes late. So he'll be in in a little bit.
I guess, I guess I'd like to say I appreciate that you continued that item too. There's been a couple items in the past I wish we had continued, so it's great.
Yeah, I think that's helpful too, especially when the applicant's not there. To be able to talk to them, I think is super helpful. So, all right, let's go to our next agenda item, which is conflict of interest. Anyone thinking that they have a conflict of interest with any items tonight? Okay.
No.
So finding of facts, we had two finding of facts, ProView Windows and Stroker Beesaw. Was everyone able to review those? Sorry, findings, I always say it wrong, findings of fact, fact, not finding of fact.
And I'm prepared if you want me to present those.
Okay, great. Yeah, they looked great, so I don't, I don't think we have anything on those. All right, then let's move to agenda item number four, and the text amendment for accessory dwelling units.
And I will be presenting that one. This was an application from a resident who would like to have a taller garage than our code currently allows. And, but this amendment would be for the citywide, for all residential zones where there's a single-family dwelling. And it's basically to allow a 20-foot height of a detached accessory structure. Where currently it is in relation to the height of the home. So we did do a comparison for the municipalities in the city, excuse me, the valley with 14 cities, including Murray and 20 feet.
By the way, thank you so much. That was so helpful to see just kind of other city policies, though.
That was. Thanks, thanks, Maren. I thought it was too, because you never know, you know, maybe we aren't in the groove or whatever. So it looked like, yeah, basically everybody does at least 20 feet, some more, and some have a scale height. But the request is just to allow for up to 20 feet for a detached accessory structure, period, which will not affect anything as far as the coverage, that would remain the same. And as far as setbacks from, for building code and any easements. And if you have questions, happy to answer them.
I have one. So loft spaces, that is considered a second story, correct? So if I were to build an accessory dwelling in the back and try to sneak in a loft, we would say, no, that's not permitted based on the single story, correct?
That is correct. We do have a little caveat that you can have a, what we call like a mezzanine, but there are certain restrictions to that, but basically you are right, one story, yes.
Okay.
Are detached garages considered accessory dwelling units?
No, they're accessory structures. Did I say accessory dwelling units?
Or accessory structures?
Accessory structures.
No, you said it right, I said it wrong. So this applies to detached garages?
Yes, detached garages or sheds for that fact, yes, which can be, yeah.
A detached accessory dwelling unit would be an accessory structure also. So this would be sheds, garages, or the occasional, we only allow them on 12,000 square foot lots, et cetera, so it's tough too. You know, but yeah, technically, they would, that would be an accessory structure too, and we would allow the 20, 20 feet.
And I think I know the answer to this, but just in case, where do we measure that? From the highest point of the structure or the?
Yeah, pitch at the highest point, yeah, as measured from the grade out on the sidewalk curb and gutter, as measured from that grade.
This is saying that even if the main structure is less than 20 feet, accessory dwelling unit can be 20 feet.
Accessory structure, oh, well, yes, accessory structures, yes. This is specifically accessory structures. So in the instance of the applicant, his home is 16 feet or just under 16 feet, but he wants to accommodate an RV and therefore needs the taller garage because of the garage door opening, obviously. So he's requested to amend the code so that he can store his motorhome RV in the garage. And we found that that's not that uncommon, actually, so.
You know, one of the things I like about this is that it allows the people that have the flat roof houses like in Hidden Village and other areas of Murray that started out with the gravel kind of flattish roofs, but now maybe want to get a motorhome or a taller trailer or toy hauler, it allows them to build a structure 20 feet high that they can keep it covered. So I think it's, you know, I think it's really well-written, Susan.
Thanks. Go ahead, Lisa.
I agree. I didn't have any questions, but now that we talked about it, I have one more question. So it's measured from curb and gutter, which is intriguing to me, because if you have a significant slope in your backyard and you're putting this nice little garage shed, accessory dwelling for your RV way back at the end of your property, which is 10 feet lower, is it measured off the curb and gutter and you need a 10-foot height, or is it from the surrounding property?
No, actually, you're right. In fact, you just got a permit not too long ago where that was the case. They were on three quarters of an acre, I think, and the detached garage was 100 plus, I think it was about 150 feet plus, and they had a four-foot change in grade, and their garage, well, it's less than 20 when you measure it from the grade, but because of that slope, slopes down to the, and so we do have a allowance for that in our code, yeah.
So in theory, if I had an accessory dwelling, I could have a walkout basement and a, and a, and a main level, right? I mean, there's not, there's not that grade anywhere in this city really that we're going to see that, or there's going to be a very limited number of lots that would have that, but in theory, I could do that.
In, in theory, you could, sorry, but yeah, Travis, in theory, you could, but then remember, we, we limit those accessory dwelling units. And you're talking about the detached one, but we still limit those to 1,000 square feet or the 40%. So it, it's hard to imagine not getting to that number real fast with a walkout basement and an accessory dwelling unit like that. But yeah, in theory, yes.
Okay, great. Any other questions about this item? Okay, let's move on to agenda item number five, general plan amendment and zone map amendment for Bullion Street.
And I think that's, that's me, I'm doing that one. So this is, just to give you the, the overview without the benefit of the slides to, to kind of help explain it. This is the outcome that Mr. Brodsky committed to at the end of the April 1 meeting, where he withdrew his applications. He came back, made new applications to, to modify the general plans map to the medium density to accommodate the RM15, but then he also made an application for RM15 zoning and R16 zoning on the front 3.36 acres to kind of guarantee or solidify that, that plan and, and commit to that density and no greater like the RM15 would allow, because that was not the only concern that, that folks had had, but it was that, it was a concern that he could address by then and commit to. So he withdrew the applications and then re-app, reapplied. So this has been reviewed now based on those two zones being applied. The overall density is just over nine units to the acre when you combine the two different zones. Now, I think it's important to note, we analyzed this based on what you could do in those zones, not necessarily his plan. His, his plan's important to it because that delineates that 3.36 acres, but he's committed to 3.36 acres at R16 and the remainder at RM15. That gets you just over nine units to the acre in an overall project. The, so it does kind of what he, what he committed to. A lot of the slides, I've, I've kept some of the slides from the previous presentation, and we'll, we'll go through those tonight again as well, talking about the general plan, et cetera. But I'll, I'll be quick, we have more comments to read. We had comments last time to read, but because he withdrew the application, we didn't go through those. So you all should have received a whole bunch of comments by email on Tuesday evening. We have about 15 more. Susan, Zach, is that about right? About 15 more comments to read?
About 18, I think, so far.
Got a, got a few at the last, at the two-minute warning, so we have.
I was, I was impressed that two of the comments were actually positive in favor.
Yeah, we did get a couple of, a couple of positive comments. And there were, there were a couple of positive comments in the previous group of them as well that, that didn't wind up getting read because we, we didn't actually go through those. But there have been those folks that are, that are interested in, in seeing a difference in a more variety in housing. And it was kind of fun to see that, yeah, I enjoyed that as well.
Hey, Jared, I think you said 145 notices were sent out to the surrounding area. And last time we had, I forget, like 52 comments. How many of the comments we're hearing tonight new, or is it still about a third of the population that's expressing concern?
It's, it's hard to say if all of them are new, not all of them are new. What I can tell you is that they're not all new, a lot of them are repeat comments from before. But like you saw in the batch that you, that you got by email, some of them are repeats, but some of them are new comments. And I didn't go through and cross-check to see if this email sent one before, if they're just kind of. What I didn't see were new themes, I didn't see new concerns that hadn't been expressed before in the previous application. And I saw a lot of comments saying, well, we, while we appreciate that some of it's been dialed back to R16, we'd rather see all of it dialed back to R16, we still have concerns about traffic, et cetera. But I don't know how many of them are actually new to this set of applications.
I mean, guess in all fairness, I could have done that tally too, but I, I didn't, so I thought I'd ask if you did.
I thought about it, but I wasn't sure, it wasn't going to, it wasn't going to keep me from reading them into the record or sending them on to you, so I thought, what the heck, we'll just keep going, so.
Can I ask another question, or do you have more?
I, there's, there's not, unless you guys have, I'm open to your questions now. Other than that, it's pretty much, a lot of the same things apply. Him going to R16 and RM15 combined didn't change any of the general client, general plan considerations that we had gone through. It did modify a few of the zoning considerations, but it ameliorated those more so than had been the RM15 plan. So I, I don't have a lot of other information to give you, so other questions that you have are, I'm, I'm open to that, go for it.
So I was a little bit surprised that we didn't receive two applications and two items to vote on, because I thought in theory, because he was coming with us with two different zoning requests, we could approve one and deny the other, but it looks like we've, I'm not sure, is legality around that? Should we have done that? Is it a different process because we didn't? What's?
You, you could in theory recommend for one and not, and not the other. But yeah, the two applications are one for the general plan and then one to rezone that property to R16 and RM15. So he combined them, we accepted them that way. If, if your inclination is to approve the R16 portion of it changed, but not the other, then you would be in effect leaving the remainder of it A1 zoning unless he wanted to apply for something different. You can work that out with him as you go through the process tonight.
Jared?
Yeah.
So 4.64 acres of RM15.
Yeah.
How do you calculate the maximum number of structures that could go up on that space?
12 units per acre.
So you can't go to 15?
Not effectively, no, there's.
But can you? I mean, I, this has been, this has been the whole issue all along, is we approve something that you can build on, then you don't have to go to a smaller number. And if that, if he can build 15 units on there, then we're still up to 60 units on those two properties.
Yes, that, that is, well, you're, okay, I don't, I don't know about this. So you're saying the 60 units, the R16 can't get any bigger, that's what it is.
So that's 20.
Yeah.
And 4.64 acres.
Would be 60 at 55.
Yep, 69, 69, 68 units.
And to.
Potentially.
Potentially.
That's all we're voting on. We're not voting on the plan that, that Hamlet has submitted. That's a next ballgame. This is strictly about the zoning.
That's true, and I'll tell you, from my perspective, and I, and I guess we always, we view the RM15 zone as 12 units per acre, because I have not in seven years, I have yet in seven years to see anyone get to 15, I've, I've yet to see anybody get past 12. It's been done once that I'm aware of, at Avonlea, and it was used in partial, not all the way. So I don't, your risk of them being at 15 is nil, it really is. This, RM15 is 12 units per acre, in my opinion. It, it is possible technically, but to get the additional units with only four acres to use it on is probably not going to happen, but it is technically.
You're basing that off of utilities, setbacks, all that easements, that what, that's?
Driveway, you've got to have driveway, you've got to have extra parking, you've got to have all that too.
So on that 4.46 acres, he's, if you look at the plan, he's pretty tight with the, with the units that he's got there. The real, the real reduction came in the R16 part of it, not in the RM15 part. That layout, when you lay out townhomes like this, that's kind of the density that you're, you're at, is about 12 units per acre. It works very well for that, he's actually at 11. something on it. So I don't, I don't, I mean, I can't discount what you're saying, Ned, not at all, because it's absolutely correct. RM15 zoning allows 12 units per acre as a base density, and if you do these performance, if you go through these performance standards, you can get to 15 units per acre. But you guys as a commission have to approve that as a part of the PUD subdivision and a condition to use for it for those units. And if you look at those lists of things, they are not small things to do.
Maybe, maybe, this is a, a silly question to ask, but is there a more applicable or more appropriate designation that he should be thinking about from a, for, in terms of what, what would actually represent what he plans to do with the project that won't give people as much heartbreak?
It's not a silly question at all, it's, it's a good question. RM10 is always the next, is the next available multifamily zone that we have down. The problem with RM10 is that its base density is seven units per acre, and you have to go through those same things that would get you to 15 units from the 12 base of the RM15 to get to 10 units or nine units, which is what he's really looking at, 10 or 11 units. So RM10 isn't a realistic zone for the townhomes like this, because your, RM10 as a base density at seven units per acre is basically like an R16. An R16 project is about seven units to the acre. So it doesn't help it, because it's a base density problem. So the next one up is higher than you'd like to see, but there's no good middle ground there between the 10 and the 15. It's a good question, Jeremy, thank you.
So my question is, because we're, we're not looking at a project, I mean, I know that plans have been presented and things like that, we're looking at just RM15 and R16.
Yeah.
I mean, if the zoning is changed, any developer that comes in now as an RM15 zone and tries to present a project will run into those same problems of being able to get 15 units on this parcel. They're all going to have the roadways, the setbacks, the cell tower, all of those problems. So changing it from RM15 for any developer that then, say Hamlet doesn't develop and come through, they're all going to encounter the problems that probably 11 units to the acre is what they're going to max out on, on those 4.46 acres.
Yes. That's.
So changing the zoning, even without this project, is not necessarily adding 69 units to that property?
Not necessarily, but the zoning potential is still there for more than, than what his project allows. It's hard to get to, and it's hard for this practical way for anybody to get to it.
Right.
I almost had the hardest time voting. I, working through the discussion, I think, oh yeah, that makes sense. Then working through the discussion, I think, well, that makes sense. I'm going to talk myself into out, and around this for hours, and I'm not sure I can make a decision.
It's not an easy, it's not an easy application to consider for, for the commission. It's, there are merits to doing it, there are challenges with doing it, and we totally, as staff, we sympathize. When we, when Mr. Brodsky approached us about it, you know, we talked about it and, and I say we, but it was me meeting with, with Mike back then and then proposing it to my staff and saying, are we comfortable going forward? But I met with Mike a while ago, it's been, it's been a year ago now, about that project, whether or not we would, we would support rezoning to it. I see enough merit in it from the general plans point of view to warrant taking the, taking the chance and making that, making that change. But not everyone's going to see the same merits in it as me, and I understand that. So, and there is that, there is that, there is that greater density, and it is, it is different than the surrounding area, absolutely.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Lisa.
It fills a need in the community, and there's a, it's a rare location in which there's a buffer on three sides, which makes it less of a burden to the community, but at the same time, it increases traffic, and so.
But one of the things I really appreciated was that you included the traffic engineer and the city engineers' comments about what the maximum designation for this road classification is. And it's, as we sit, less than 50% of the capacity of this roadway as designed. So I, I mean, that, 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 there has to be some merit in that as well.
And to that point, Travis, the traffic study was done using a 90-unit proposal. And what I read here today versus, I think, last meeting, was that the traffic engineer took into account the fact that, yes, we're at COVID, so the school zones may not be quite as densely traveled as perhaps in a full-blown school day. Or typical school day.
I, 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 that was, that's probably been my biggest concern about this, is the, is the traffic. I've spent, I've gone there multiple times during the day, during rush hours, the morning and the afternoon, and then just during the day, in, as I've been out and about. And, you know, there, there's, the area has, there's multiple ways to get in and out of the area. They don't, you don't have to go out through Bullion onto Seventh West. I mean, you can go over towards Murray Parkway, and, and there's a lot of different ways to get out of that area that it doesn't feel like it's, this is going to just be a massive traffic headache for people. You know, I, I'm, so I, I, I think that, for me, that, that was a, a big concern, because it is a change for that, for that, that neighborhood.
I also think that they're going to cost 300,000 to 400,000 each, which is very similar to the cost of housing. So you're going to have the same community feel, just a lot more in your community. It's, it's a tough, I don't, you guys will have to convince.
Other comment is, so the single-family homes have a 35-foot maximum height. We just talked a little about that last time. And in our, our RM15, we add another 10 feet to that.
Well, five.
Five feet.
Just, oh yeah, 35 to 40, right, as, yep, so, which isn't tremendous, but it's still more, more than in the single-family residential lots.
That's true.
Don't get me wrong, I know the change of the community a little bit, because you have people living there for a year instead of six. So people come, but it's still not a monthly lease, it's long-term leases, so it just makes your community bigger. That's really the only downside, I think, I don't know.
So I just want to remind you that we are making, forwarding a recommendation or approval or denial to the city council. So I know that, you know, there's some hard parts about making this decision, but ultimately, we're, we're forwarding a recommendation to them about where we fall on that. So if that helps with some of your considerations, you know, that, that they're the ultimate decision-makers on this. Um, but Jared, I wanted to ask you one more question about specifically, when we're looking at this very specific project, which has so many really unique circumstances to it, but namely the buffering of, there's not really anywhere around it that RM15 could bleed into another neighborhood to be rezoned into that neighborhood because of this specific project and the way that it located. I don't know, do you have anything to say or speak towards looking at it? I don't know.
I, I think I, I think I know what you're, I think I know what you're getting at, and, and I think you're right. The, the things that make the site easy to buffer also are kind of a result of, of the way it's not going to expand onto other areas. And you're not in danger of, say, for example, creating a larger area of medium density than, than this eight acres. This is, this is, this is it in this area. And then the rest of the area is built out of the corridors and utility uses that are, that are there and established and, and not going away. So there's not open ground really to, to, to do more of this.
Is it not exactly setting a precedence either, because there's very few other properties similar to this?
Yeah, and that's, that's a great point. There are a lot of comments about the precedent being set. So any, any A1 land then could just be, skip all these zones and go to RM15 or go to medium density. This is a very specific site, and while precedent is fine, it, this is a specific area that is different than other areas, and we take every application based on its merits. So if we find another application, if we get another application that's similar to this enough, we would probably recommend the same kind of thing, but it would depend entirely on all of the circumstances for us. That's not to discount the notion of precedence, but this application, in my opinion, is not setting a precedent for anything else. It's completely isolated as an incident.
I was going to make a comment also, Maren, to answer probably your question a little better, there is that power utility, power right-of-way that basically surrounds the property on the west and the south side. So that is an additional buffer that's unique to this property being proposed.
Yeah, I, I think when we, I think it's hard that the project has been presented, and I understand why, but I also think when you look at the zoning for this very specific eight acres, that it's easy to kind of separate that this is a really unique project and that it's not setting, that, you know, the other places in the city aren't suddenly now going to all be rezoned to RM15. Like, and it, it does seem very like, you know.
Can I ask one more question? I think we have like one and a half minutes. Kind of hoping the group's comfortable in the meeting discussing separating and potentially voting on one versus the other? The two pieces of the property?
Your recommendation for R16 for one property and make a recommendation for RM15 for the, for another property, so.
I, I want to hear what the group thinks of that thought, but I'd like to discuss if everyone's okay.
Probably a deal killer for the, for the developer.
Yeah, we, we did something similar to this maybe two meetings ago. And I think it was very, very much the same, where two pieces of property were next to each other, and they were separated and cut, and the zoning was different in each of them over on, I don't know, was that on Mine Street?
Was it the one on 56, maybe?
56, 56, you're right.
All those different pieces.
Right, exactly. So I don't, I don't, we can talk about that, Lisa, I don't know that it's.
I guess part of the reason for asking is, one, the applicant didn't apply that way, and two, I don't know if the land is actually divided that way. if the land is actually divided that way. So I don't know if we can vote on something where there isn't actual boundaries around the property. Is that? I don't know.
Let me let me try to address that real quickly because I know we are running out of time. The the short answer is yes, because he's prepared legal descriptions for both of those pieces. That section that's 3.36 acres and the section that's 4. whatever. Those are prepared as legal descriptions and there are two properties already. So what he goes through is called an administrative boundary adjustment. We we do that by signing papers here in our office and it changes his his existing property lines to match what he's drawn there. And it's, I don't want to say stroke of a pen, but with what he's done already, almost, yeah. The engineering checks it to make sure they close and we change the properties and it's rezoned. We just aren't going to make him go, we're not going to do that, execute that unless the city council says, yeah, we're okay with rezoning them this way and then we'll execute that and and the reason will happen. But that's the short answer of that question. So it can be done, yes. Um. And I think Jeremy and and that's points well taken. It's approving the R16 part and leaving the back 4.46 that he's proposing A1 is deal killer for the builder. There's no there's no point in that. If it's not comfortable for you, then recommend denial.
I understand. I guess I was thinking that it could make it, um, I don't know, I felt like it could be more respectful to everyone.
Sure.
The developers' perspective and the communities, if we separate them, maybe. I don't know.
If 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 it's if what you're if what you're thinking is he needs to come back and and do it different, then he'd want to just come back and and do it different and and say, okay, well, I'll just apply to rezone both sections R16 and see how I do, but he'd have to reapply for that. So.
I mean, I think we should discuss it. Honestly, what I'm thinking is I'm all in favor of the R16. I don't know what I think about the RM10, 15. I don't know.
Sure. Sue.
Quick question. Are you going to um want me to time the comments when we get to the comment portion to three minutes?
Yes.
We'll be timing them.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure and then we'll also remind people to not repeat comments and so forth. Okay.
All right. So with that, um, we will, I'll call to order um the Murray City Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, May 6, 2021. It is 6:32 PM. Present this evening are Commissioners Jake Pearson, Jeremy Lowry, Sue Wilson, Lisa Milkovich, Travis Nate, Ned Hacker, and I myself am Maren Patterson. I'm the chair. Uh, with staff tonight, we have Jared Hall, Zach Smallwood, Susan Nixon, um, and I think maybe Bryant Farnsworth is on.
He's on.
As the Chair of the Murray City Planning Commission, I, Maren Patterson, have determined that due to infectious disease, COVID-19 novel coronavirus, holding an in-person meeting with an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those in attendance. Under these circumstances, Utah Code 52 dash four dash 2074 allows for electronic meetings to be held without an anchor location, so long as the public had an opportunity to view the meeting and submit public comments. We are holding tonight's planning commission meeting via video conference and the meeting is being live streamed at www.murraycitylive.com. If you have a public comment to submit to the planning commission, you can do so via email at planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. So we will start with um our business items. Our first item this evening is approval of minutes. We have a meeting minutes to approve from the April 1st meeting and the April 15th meeting. Um, we looked at those in the pre-meeting. There were any changes or um corrections to be made. So did everyone have a chance to review those?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the um April 1st and April 15th.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the plant Murray City Planning Commission meetings of April 1 and April 15, 2021, as written.
Great. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Are there any opposed? Okay, motion passes for our meeting minutes. Um, our business item number two is any conflict of interest. Do any commissioners have a conflict of interest with any of the agenda items to be made?
No.
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 Aye. Um, so there are no conflicts of interest for this meeting. Um, item number three is approval of the findings of fact. Have everyone has everyone had an opportunity to review um our findings of fact for Proview Windows and Stroker Diesel?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve those findings of fact.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the findings of fact for a conditional use permit for Joshua Johnson doing business as Proview Windows on the property located at 4649 South Cherry Street and a motion to approve the findings of fact for a conditional use permit allowing auto sales for Richard Whitaker doing business as Stroker Diesel at the property address 364 West 6100 South, Unit Number A.
Great, thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Commissioner Pearson, second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Um, any opposed? Okay, great. Um, findings of facts are approved and we will move on to our first um agenda item. Number four, um Brad Lambert applying for a text amendment for accessory structures. Is the applicant here this evening? Okay, great. Um, we will have our staff report by Susan Nixon.
Hey, thank you. Um, this applicant, can you see my screen? Sorry, are you seeing my screen with them?
Yes, we can.
Yes, perfect. Thank you. This um text amendment is from Brad Lambert. It would be applicable to the citywide for all residential zones, and this is regarding the accessory structure height. This would affect numerous sections of the code, which would be the A1, the R16, the R18, the R110, R112, R210, RM10, RM15, RM20, and RM25, which is also code section 17 dot 92, 17 dot 96, 17 dot 100, 17 dot 104, 17 dot 108, 17 dot 112, 17 dot 116, 17 dot 120, 17 dot 128, and 17 dot 29, 28, excuse me, 24 and 28. So um, Mr. Lambert applied for a detached garage in his rear yard. And um, subsequent to that was his home is less than 16 feet. Our current code is in allows accessory structures to be a height as it relates to the main dwelling. Prior to, so I'm going to give you a little history on the the text for this um accessory structures. Prior to 2019, our code read no accessory structure was allowed to exceed the height of the primary dwelling on the property. In 2019, the fall of 2019, the city council amended our code to indicate an accessory structure may consist of a one-story building and may not exceed 16 feet to the peak of the roof if the primary residential dwelling is less than 20 feet in height. If the primary dwelling is greater than 20 feet in height, an accessory structure is allowed of a height of 20 feet to the peak of the roof. Since we adopted or made that change in 2017, there have we've still received several applications for individuals whose homes are less than 20 feet. Um, a lot of them are maybe in older areas or homes 30 plus years old that have either flat roofs or us, you know, a height of 16 feet or less. And we've also discovered more recently that, I think we all know, we as Americans love our toys, boats, RVs, motorhomes, et cetera. And a lot of them are big and they don't fit in the smaller height garages. So Mr. Lambert um is exactly that situation. He has a motorhome where he would like to store his the home in the motorhome in his garage rather than sit it out front. And in order to do so, he needed to have a taller garage. His um, his other option is he could raise the roof of the home to be higher, 20 feet or higher, and then that way he could have a 20-foot high garage. That is an option, but not always practical. Um. But so he applied for the text amendment, which would be applicable to all the um residential zones in the city. We did do a a WSET comparison for other municipalities in the valley, total of 14, including Murray City. And all of them have at least a minimum 20-foot height, some a little more, some on a scaled set with it in relation to a scaled setback. Um, we as staff feel that going with a 20-foot one-story building height for accessory structures would be appropriate. This would not affect as far as the required zoning setbacks and or building code setbacks and also the easements that may be applicable in rear yard areas. Um, so we as staff are in support of this request of Mr. Lambert and have proposed that the text be changed to those applicable residential zoning districts to read, an accessory structure may consist only of one-story building and may not exceed 20 feet to the peak of the roof. And the applicable sections of the code are listed there above on the staff recommendations. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I think you're on mute, Maren.
Sorry about that. Um, if there's no question for staff, then we can um maybe just have the applicant raise their hand.
Okay, uh, he should be able to speak now.
Did you get that? Sorry.
Oh, great, thanks. Um, will you just state your name and address for the record and then if there's any additional information that you would like to give us about um this application?
Um, my name is Brad Lambert and my address is 980 East Searle Avenue, Murray, Utah, 84117. And I think Susan went basically over all my concerns. I just think that it would it just would be fair and from what, you know, that with even the modern homes that don't have a higher roof, I just think it would just be easier on the staff and people just to have a set height.
Great. Thank you so much for being with us tonight. Um, I will now open this meeting for public comment regarding this item. If you would like to make a comment on this agenda item, you can do so by emailing theplanningcommission@murray.utah.gov. Or if you are participating through the Zoom webinar registration and you would like to make a live comment, you can click raise hand button. If you're making a live comment, we ask that you limit your comment to three minutes. And if you have submitted an email comment previous to the meeting, it will now be read into the record. Um, but we ask you do not make any additional live comments. Um, so we will uh wait, pause a moment and let anyone either raise their hand or um submit an email comment.
While we're waiting, um, I just want to maybe just explain that this is since this is a text amendment, we did not do mailings to a certain areas, meaning around Mr. Lambert's uh home, um, because it is citywide. But we did send out notices to affected entities and we have not received any comment back or emails.
Great, thank you, Susan. Um, has anyone clicked raise their hand or for this item?
I don't think so. If you've got any, Zach?
No, I have. There's nobody that have raised their hands for this item or uh no comments as of yet.
Okay, well, then I will close the public comment period um and bring it back for um any discussion or a motion to um the forward to the city council.
I I would like.
Madam Chair.
Could I make a comment first, Travis?
Of course.
Yes, please.
I'd like Susan to clarify or to confirm that access, this is for accessory structure. We're looking at accessory structures, but that accessory structures include not only garages or um uh sheds, if you will, um, storage shed, but they also include accessory dwelling units.
That is correct. Accessory dwelling units, when they are detached, obviously, um, would fall into the same category, but the accessory dwelling units have the limitation of size of 1,000 square feet or the the size of or 40% of the main dwelling. But yes, this would apply to the accessory dwelling units.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that clarification.
So, Madam Chair, if I may, um, just a general comment. I think this is actually a really practical solution um to a problem that I didn't really appreciate. So I'm actually happy that the applicants come forward with this. The thought of having to raise the roof on his house in order to build a garage is that's government getting in the way of what people need to be able to do to live in a modern world. So um with that, I would actually like to make a motion that we uh forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the proposed tax amendment in the stated chapters of the Murray City Land Use Ordinance regarding accessory structure height.
Great, thank you.
I will second that.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Nate to um forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the proposed tax amendment in the stated chapters of Murray City Land Use Ordinance regarding accessory structure height and a second by Commissioner Lowry. Is there any additional discussion on the motion? Okay, then we will take a roll call though.
We didn't discuss it, but do you want me to do it, Susan?
Sure.
Okay. Let's see. Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Commissioner Milkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Nate?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson.
I think this is a great change. So, yes. Okay, so motion passes and that will move forward to the city council um for those changes. So we will move on to agenda item number five, uh, general plan and amendment and zone map amendment for hamlet development on at the property address 935 West Bullion Street. Um, as the applicant, I'm assuming they're here tonight. Great, okay. So we will have our staff report by Jared Hall.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here real quick. This should be the one. Are you guys seeing the screen? Number five, Hamlet Development. Okay, good, because I'm seeing something weird. So as long as you're seeing the right thing, we're in good shape. This is uh an an application for a general plan and zoning map amendments to 935 West Bullion Street. On April 1st, um, an application was made regarding this property or two applications were made regarding this subject property and uh, the application was to amend the general plan map from low-density residential to medium-density residential and then to subsequently rezone the properties from A1 agriculture to RM15 medium-density multifamily residential. At that time, during that meeting, we had taken a lot of comments from the neighborhood. Um, and I'm going to go through a couple of other things as well, but that night, uh, Mr. Brodsky, the applicant for Hamlet Development, withdrew his applications um in order to reapply for what he's applied for tonight. Uh, so we're reviewing basically the result of that of that withdrawal of an application and and reapplication. So the application tonight is for the same properties, uh, 935 West Bullion. They are in the A1 zone. Uh, the application and they're in the in two different, actually, uh, general land use, uh, future land use map categories, low-density residential and parks and open space. So he is still up. So he is still applying to re, to redesignate the properties on the future land use map from low-density and open space to medium-density residential. Because he is applying to rezone the back 4.64 acres to RM15 as he was applying for the total before and the front 3.36 acres to R16. And I'm gonna talk about, just to make sure it's on the record, why that is in, for just a minute, and then I'll go quickly through the rest of the slides and we can open up for, for comments. Um, and your, and your questions as a commission. The, uh, the reason that he's made that change is because Mr. Brodsky, prior to the April 1st public hearings, had had a, a neighborhood meeting, uh, with folks and had sent out a lot of notices, got a lot of comments from people. And he had been showing, um, I forget exactly how many townhouse units there were in it. He was showing a large park area and a bunch of townhomes around that park area at a greater density than this current project. But, um, many of the comments were about the density and they were concerned about that. And he dialed back the project, uh, a concept project that he has to this series of single-family homes on detached lots in an R16-type setting along Bullion Street and then the townhomes to the rear. It still has an area where there's a, a park to overlay a capped portion of remediated contamination materials, uh, that are, that are on this site. And there's a cell tower that you can't build residential units within 165 feet of. So there's still these constraints, but he was able to, to modify his plan somewhat and dial the density down. The overall density of this kind of a concept project was about nine, just over nine units per acre, 9.03, something like that. And, and felt more palatable to a lot of, a lot of the people that he had contact with about this. However, there were concerns from many commenters that had seen this plan in that neighborhood meeting about the ability for, so the, the plan's limited like this, sure, but your, your RM15 zoning would let you do a lot more than this. Uh, and there's no guarantees, as you guys know, as a commission, we're not reviewing a plan like this tonight. We're reviewing zoning. And the zoning is R16 and RM15. It was all RM15. So Mr. Brodsky had said, "I'll withdraw the applications in order to re, to reapply, to rezone to only R16." That means these lots up here, I can only get this density here. So I'm limited and because of the constraints back here, I can't really do much more with this. I'm, this is the project. You're gonna see something at this density. So we've run the, we've run the numbers on these projects, on this, on these zoning designations, and this is what you're gonna see, something about like this, about nine units to the acre. So in effect, he's limiting his potential density or anybody else's on this project down from what it was to about 75 units overall between the two different zones. I wanna make sure that we, we cover this really quickly too, just to make sure it's, it's clear again for the public and for everybody involved. The applications that you're looking at tonight are not for this plan. This is Mr. Brodsky's intent, but again, the zoning is the zoning once it's, it's put in place. So the applications are for the future land use map change and the zoning map only. Development of the property requires more public hearings. So the kind of thing he's proposing in that concept is a planned unit development subdivision that comes back to you for review for conditional use permits and subdivision approvals, comes back to the planning commission. So you have a chance to really harden up the buffers of things that mitigate the impacts through that process. And then again, you're the recommending body for this, for both of these changes. In both cases, the, the, the future land use map change and the zoning map amendments, those would be recommendations and the applications would be forwarded to the city council with your recommendations attached. So there'll be more public hearings at the city council after the planning commission's done its work. Just wanted to go through, there were a lot of concerns and I'm gonna go really quickly through these and, and let you guys ask any questions that you have and, and get to the public comments. There were a significant number of comments in the first round of, of applications and in this new round of applications about the general plan. Why have a plan if we're not gonna stick to the plan? We, we count on the plan, et cetera, and we do. The, the plan is, um, it, it took a lot of time to put together and that was pointed out by a lot of comments. It took years to put together. I, I was part of that process. We, um, as a commission, as a city, adopted this plan, but they are not intended to be static. That's just not the case. They get reviewed every five to 10 years at least. And in a growing city, it's reasonable to expect that we would look at changes like this. We would consider applications like this on their merits and on the individual circumstances of the property. And that's what we've done here as staff and why we're recommending what we are to you as a commission. Again, this is the future land use map that we're referencing. The change that has been requested is from one of these categories, low-density residential to medium-density residential for those properties in order to support the zoning, because each category supports different zones. Um, and we like those to match the zoning map. Uh, future land use, that future land use map is, is one part of the things that we consider. Again, that, that future land use map has many different aspects, many goals and objectives, et cetera. These categories are the categories that we're talking about in this list right here. So, uh, again, in that plan, you're gonna see the low-density residential category and it's gonna tell you things about it and it's gonna suggest these different kinds of, of zoning designations. Uh, R16 actually fits into the low-density request, uh, into the low-density designation and the medium-density designation, just because of the kind of densities that get produced by an R16 subdivision. Um, so the, the reason for the zone, sorry, the reason for the future land use map designation change is really the RM15 zoning. The R16 doesn't really require it. There are lots of different elements to evaluate when we look at the general plan changes that have been proposed. We focused on land use and urban design element, the housing and neighborhoods element, and especially on the modern income housing element. This is all familiar to you, so I'm gonna go quickly through these slides because this is part of the presentation we made on April 1st. These aspects of the application did not change. These considerations didn't change because of the R16 inclusion. They just hardened up those edges, but the same considerations have been made. There are 12 objectives, 19 individual strategies, just in the land use and urban form category. That's just again to illustrate or to make it clear that these plans are not static. And just because the map says one thing, doesn't mean that you should never consider making a change to that map, whether it's ever, that it's always inappropriate to consider making a change to that map. Neighborhoods and housing, it supports these goals. We feel like as a staff, it supports these goals to provide a diversity of housing through range of, of types and development patterns. Because that R16 and RM15 combination is gonna allow a different, a different kind of development pattern and a slightly greater density. We do feel like it supports the, the modern income housing goal the, the most. It promotes affordable housing options, uh, as we've talked about in the previous hearing and as we talked about in the pre-meeting. We should be working as a city, one of our strategies that's been suggested by our general plan is that we should work as a city to ensure that the zoning of residential areas doesn't prohibit compatible types of housing. So the question is compatibility of the housing. And this site offers a unique opportunity to add density and a different housing type, but keep it compatible by, by keeping it somewhat separated, by being able to mitigate the impacts of additional height that was mentioned in the pre-meeting, that additional five feet of height, et cetera. And you as a commission, when you come, when it comes back for a project, if it's rezoned and it comes back as a subdivision, you have a chance to look at that height difference and say whether or not that's appropriate. Maybe it's not. We, we can't answer that question yet because we are not looking at a project. We're looking at zoning. Again, we should be trying to support when we can ranges of housing types, um, as it, as it says here. Land use and urban design categories too, this, we do feel like the RM15 zone and the R16 zone applied there will allow that flexibility, but keep that R16 inclusion that Mr. Brodsky has applied for now. We'll keep that overall project density down to an even more manageable, uh, level. And we like, whenever we can, we like projects, um, housing projects that mix housing types. Where you can, you have not just all townhomes all congregated in one area, but you have a mix of housing, a mix of single-family detached homes, a mix of, of row homes, townhomes, et cetera. And you wind up at 9.2 dwelling units per acre. I couldn't remember that number off the top of my head, but 9.2 is what the project he's proposing, uh, is. And that's where you end up looking at the zones objectively. Uh, again, this is the area, we talked a little bit about buffering and the natural kind of buffers of the, uh, of the site. In the pre-meeting, you have the utility uses here from Murray City. Uh, the power company owns these properties. This is all power corridor for the Rocky Mountain, Rocky Mountain Power, and that runs, it's regional, that's not going anywhere. So, and this is an extension of it as well, coming up the south side of the property. So there's a natural, uh, in already imposed, outside imposed boundary, uh, unbuffer for the project. And again, there were, there was a lot of comments about high density. This is a medium-density zone, RM15, 12 units to the acre, and especially mixed with R16 zoning. These are medium-density zones. This overall, the overall density of this project right here is 12 units per acre, including these detached homes and these townhomes here. So that's really the density that you're kinda talking about. If you wanna visualize it, that's what you're talking about, okay? We talked about traffic, uh, in the pre, in the previous hearing. The traffic issues that we talked about before did not change as a result of this application. In fact, they're, they're ameliorated more by the fact that there's R16 zoning and less units to, to consider. Uh, parking, again, just to reiterate, parking in multifamily projects is required at 2.5 units or 2.2.5 spaces per unit. Regardless, this is not a TOD project where we require one space per unit or 1.25 spaces per unit. There was some current concern in the comments about parking. That should not be an issue here. There's the findings from the traffic study. You've all seen those. The traffic study found that there were no, um, there, there were no serious impacts from this kind of development to the traffic in the area. Uh, other issues, I'll, I'll leave that to your questions. We did sit down with folks from the school district to talk to them, um, their service supply. I forget his title, but we, we did sit down with the gentleman David from the school district to talk about this and make sure that we were covering any concerns that they had because that did get raised a lot and we didn't get a response from the, from that office when we had sent our notices to affected entities. The school district, uh, personnel that handles this kind of thing did not have concerns with this application, felt like it would be, um, handled fine. So if there's any other, um, questions that I can answer for you, we did make these findings that we provided for you in your staff report. We do support this change as a staff. We feel like the change of the general plan and the change to the zonings that has been proposed is a reasonable change to make and an opportunity for us to add some missing middle housing that we don't have enough of in the city. We have lots of higher-density apartments at our transit stations and things like that. And we have a lot of single-family zoning on larger lots. The, the missing part of our housing component is this missing, this, this center part, townhomes. Nine units to the acre, 11 units to the acre, 12 units to the acre, uh, slightly more affordable. And that will help us in, in a lot of endeavors for our housing and our affordability. So we are recommending that the planning commission would forward a recommendation of approval for both the general land use map change and the zone map amendment to the city council. Do you have any questions for staff, um, that we can answer now? Go ahead, Lisa.
Um, Jared, I was wondering if you could please expand upon the traffic impact study and traffic calming study. They were done. I, I know, I think the public has access to the charts that we were given access to. But for those who haven't taken the time to read through it, I think it's concerning when it's just said there's no impact. Could you expand a little bit more?
Sure. So the, the, the way that the traffic studies typically measure, and there are two different things, the traffic impact study and the traffic calming study. The traffic impact study is gonna measure level, levels of service at different intersections. They, they took a bunch of different intersections, Bullion Street, Seventh West, for example, Bullion Street and Holly Springs, uh, et cetera. And they look at the level of service at that intersection as it stands with no change and then level of service for that intersection if, uh, if a, if a development comes in. And level of service is basically, to, not to put too fine a point on it, level of service is how long you wait at that intersection. If you come to that intersection, wanna move through that intersection, make a traffic, uh, move in that intersection, how long you have to wait. And the level of service at all of them, uh, it does drop a little bit on some of them, but not significantly as a result of this kind of, of development. They measure that by trip generation from this type of use typically. Obviously, you can't know exactly what every end user is gonna do in every home, in every townhome, in every apartment complex. But there are standardized, um, national models for how much, how many trips a unit like this generates. And then, and then how they would impact those intersections and how long people have to wait at the intersections, including the new people. So it's, none of those levels of service changed significantly. So what a traffic study then tells you, a traffic impact study tells you is, if any of them change significantly, did they change significantly enough that we need to make a change to the intersection? Do we retime the lights? Do we add lights where they're not, where they're not existing? Do we, uh, you know, et cetera? Nothing came out of that traffic impact study. It's just simply not a big enough impact to the total overall number of cars and flow of traffic. Now, the traffic calming study that was done in conjunction with that did say that there, there was a lot of concern about speed on Bullion that came up a lot. And the traffic calming study indicated that, um, while there was not a, there's not a really significant speeding problem. There are a few outliers that are going more than five or 10 miles an hour over. But most people are, are, are using Bullion within five miles an hour of the posted speed limit. The traffic calming study came back and said, "What you could do is do better sidewalks on Bullion for kids that are using that street, people that are using that street, that's always a good suggestion and fill in any missing spaces for it." And there are just a few. And then to move the, to move the, um, the, the flashing speed signs that tell you when you're going over, they could be moved. They suggested moving them to different locations where people would use them more effectively and slow themselves down. Bullion is a problem for what traffic engineers call visual cues. It's a fairly wide street. I know it doesn't feel wide to people that live on it because we saw that comment a lot too, but it is in terms of streets, a fairly wide street. And it has a lot of open space on either side. And that, that open space on the south side especially, and the hill going down and the visibility down to the bottom of it, just tells you to take your foot off the brake and, and your natural speed increases, I guess. So the visual cues are bad for keeping that road speed low. So you put up those flashing signs that tell you, "Hey, you're going 35 miles an hour" and you slow down and, and meet the, meet the speed limit. That's the best thing we can do for traffic calming.
And also, Jared, they recommended narrowing the lanes.
Narrowing the travel lanes, thank you. They're, they're nice wide travel lanes and you could, you could strike those more narrow and that slows people down when they, when they feel like there's, they need to be paying more attention to, to not drifting. So, yeah, that's great, Jake. Thank you. I forgot about that.
Mr. Hall, I think they also mentioned that the current average daily trips in the area is about 1,900 and the road was built to handle 4,000 to 6,000 average daily trips. So it's not functioning at capacity currently or with the development. It'll still be able to handle, won't be at full capacity.
And that's, that's part of why, it's exactly right, Lisa. And that's part of why you don't see recommended changes from the traffic impact study, because the road is not even near its capacity. With all that said, I, I, I do think it's important to, to note that for people that live on a street, and you all live on streets. Every, every one of us lives on some street somewhere. It, it doesn't ever, it doesn't always jive. It doesn't always make sense. When you say it's, it's not a capacity, how can it not be a capacity? This is, you know, your experience living on a road is always different than a traffic engineer's view of it. That's absolutely true. I, I, I believe that to be true. However, the, the factor means the road can handle more than it's handling and adding these units is, is not gonna impact that significantly. Your idea of significant can vary from person to person, but we have to go with the engineers on this as, as a staff anyway, so.
Jared, you, you mentioned that, um, that different types of housing are, is desirable in, in developments. Could you expand on that and explain why that's, why that's the case?
Yeah, I, I'd love to, thanks. So it's, it's kind of a, um, a personal preference of mine. As a planner, I like projects where there's variety of housing in the project. And I, it's more of an art than a science, but when you're in a place, um, in, in a neighborhood, a variety of different housing types makes it an interesting place. And when you can take, what people don't like, for example, about multifamily housing, I believe, is the, the massing, is the larger structures altogether. And when you have, it, it's more important on larger projects. When you have 400 units going into a project, I never like to see that just in the same building over and over and over again. I like to see those housing types mixed. I'd rather have a higher-density building mixed in with some townhomes too, to break up that density. It feels better on the project and we're in the business of creating good communities. With that said, we never wanna, we never wanna feel like we're destroying a community and, and this little neighborhood that he's proposing with R16 in the front and the townhomes in the back should be integrated, kind of the way, the way showing that we like to see that kind of thing. It just makes a better project in the end result. So where you, where we need middle, missing middle housing, if we can have it and not have it all in blocks all the time, if we can have it interspersed with single-family detached, it makes it more palatable, not just for the people in the missing middle housing, but for the communities that it's within as well, if that makes sense. So you don't have giant blocks of, of five-story buildings to house everybody. That's, that's not what we're after. We have that at our transit stations. We're missing these, these sort of eclectic neighborhoods.
So I'll have to add to that or ask you one more question pertaining to that? I hear you, I've heard you speak about mixing communities before and what you said this then, I felt was like the most powerful to me because, to me, it is the aesthetics, but it's also the feel of community and the feeling of someone know, knowing your neighbors, watching out for your neighbors. And when you get a large block of people who are moving every month, everybody's moving in and out, you don't get the maintenance of the facility or the caring for your neighbors. So I think what you're saying, what you're saying improves all of Murray. Instead of blocking us together here and blocking together here and having bad neighbors and good neighborhoods kind of dispersing us a little bit. So every neighbor has, every neighborhood has a community that's watching and caring for the community.
Yeah. It's a great point.
Yeah, that's, I guess I have a question about that too. Like, do, when in the plan, I know you showed that, like, that's a goal to have this mixed housing. Does that create more stability in these places when you have a variety of? So you know, somebody that moves into maybe a townhome that they could afford, but then when they're ready, they could move into a single family home, but not have to change their schools or change their neighborhood. You know, does it create, does that bring stability to those areas as a variety?
Absolutely. That variety of housing allows, and that's right in the general plan as well. I don't have that page up, but that's right in the general plan as well. The sustainability of not just housing, but housing for people and keeping people in Murray is one of the goals of the plan. And if you don't have the housing to accommodate them, you can't do that. So you don't want to be a community where every single housing option you have is over half a million dollars. You just, you can't keep your young people there and you can't keep your older people there too. So we need a mix of housing types to support all the kind of, all the people as they, lifecycle housing, sorry, I was struggling for the term that we use in planning. Lifecycle housing is a good thing and mixing housing types is the best way to get that. Because then they're always not just in the same city, but in the same neighborhood. Like, like you said, it's an opportunity for them to say, well, I need another bedroom or two more bedrooms. Maybe I can get one of these and I'll stay right here where I was. That's a great thing for, for a community. It builds communities over time. It feels disruptive when it's going in, but we believe that it creates better community over time. Jake, did you?
Yeah, I have a few questions. I guess my first one is in regard to what you're talking about, about intermixing these different types of housing densities. If that really is how we want the plan, why is the general plan not set up that way?
That's a good question. In, in some ways, in some ways it is. This particular neighborhood, we did not include RM, we didn't include medium density as a category. And that's why they've asked for the change. So what this, what this particular request in front of you does is represent an opportunity to do it where we didn't think we were going to have an opportunity to do it or where we didn't anticipate it. We have anticipated it in other parts of the city. In the Fashion Place West Plan, for example, the Fashion Place West Plan, I think the Fashion Place West Small Area Plan is a good example of where we're going to want to make some changes in order to support that idea of the general plan in, in very sort of low key, soft approach ways. The Fashion Place West Area Plan said, look, you, you want to increase densities around this station, but not to the extent that they're going to be disruptive because you have a good stable neighborhood. So be very careful, but definitely increase the densities where you have infill opportunities. This is an infill opportunity we didn't necessarily expect because it had a satellite dish and a big company on it. So when we did the general plan, we didn't make, we didn't make use of that opportunity. It's come up afterwards. But in other places in the city, you'll see us doing that. We always look for, we, and we don't have hard codes saying you, thou shalt mix housing types in, in development. But we push it every chance we get as, as staff members when we're working with people. It's just kind of, we're obnoxious that way, I guess. So we might not have a hard code that says you have to use different, uh, different types of housing in your development, but we can be pretty persuasive when we want to be so. And we're looking at instituting some codes that would do that in a better way as a result of the general plan telling us that we should. We didn't, we only created, as a result of the general plan, we created two new zones, the professional office zone and the business park zone. We probably should have created some sort of infill housing overlay or zone. We did not do that. We haven't had the staff bandwidth for it, but we're trying to correct that now.
Mixed use was new as well, wasn't it? Mixed use?
It was not. It was already a thing when we did the general plan in 2017. We had mixed use, we had TOD, we had the MCCD.
I guess one of the things that was pointed out by multiple people was in the general plan, it says that median density was to be used along corridors with transit and serve as a transition between mixed use or multi dwelling designations.
Yeah.
So I think the general plan is actually, the wording actually says that this, you know, an RM15 generally wouldn't be put down in the middle of an R18 neighborhood.
Sure. And that's, that's true. That wording is there. It fits best in those other situations where you have access to larger corridors. I would say in this case though, for example, 700 West is a, is a minor arterial. That's a corridor. We're not right on it, but we're close. It's, and nine units the acre or even the 12 is, it's medium density, but it's not at a scale where we need to be by transit stations, et cetera. So the wording is, the wording is there and that's true. But we're not far enough away from Seventh West for me to feel like we're, we're falling afoul of that wording. It doesn't have to be adjacent to corridors. It's a good use for those things. But I think it's worth, it does other things well, so.
Next question, do we know, I know that this property sits much higher than Chesterbrook does. Like it's, it's on a higher, there's kind of a plateau there and Chesterbrook goes down the hill, similar to what Bullion does, but on the, but both ways.
But to the south.
East to west and south, yeah, east to west and north to south. Do we know how much higher that sits than Chesterbrook, Chesterbrook Cove?
I don't. We'd have to look at grading plans and things to know. But that's the kind of thing that we would consider in the subdivision and say, look, we, while the RM15 zone allows, allows 40 feet in height, we may not want to allow that under the conditional use permit because we need to reduce that in order to mitigate the impact if it is sitting up real high because of the grade. Some of that's going to be alleviated by that natural distance. We're going to have some setbacks in the project and there is that already existing 70 some odd foot wide corridor. So there's going to be some distance there. What we've done in the past on many projects, we'll do like a height analysis and show the distance in scale from the existing homes and their height and the new homes. And I'm holding up my fingers to show you, but it doesn't make sense. We'll do kind of a diagram that shows you the grade and the height of the existing homes and the height of the proposed structures and see if that's alarming enough that we want to reduce them. We analyze all that during subdivision and site design. But we don't know right now what it is, no.
Okay, last question for now.
Quick, Mr. Jake, real quick. Can I ask Mr. Hall just to add something to your first question and your response to your first question? He asked about the zoning and how he stated that this medium density was ideal for corridors. Can you talk for a second about how this property is unique because of the buffering around it?
Well, that's, I think, I don't know if I can put any, make it the point any better than you, than you did. It is unique because of the buffering. So we're looking at applying it in an area where we didn't always necessarily consider it. And the corridor, I guess it depends on the language about corridors. That is language that's there undeniably. But medium density, there are corridors and there are corridors. Transit corridors like, like the tracks line. We're doing projects in those areas at 65, 75, 80 units to the acre. This is, this is not that. And I would never propose that we would do something on even close to that kind of density away from those transit quarters because it's, it's irresponsible. But this medium density is meant for corridors like, like we're describing, like this, this minor arterial or 54th South where we're looking at it. You guys will be seeing a project soon on 54th South. Zach's been fighting with them about the design of their project for a couple of months now, probably. Actually, we've, there's always work to be done. But it, it's talking about corridors, not necessarily transit quarters. At a transit quarter, we'd want much higher density. I don't think this medium density is out of whack where it's in proximity to that Seventh West corridor. It's a little, it's further from it than I'd like. Ideally, it would be the land up on the, on Seventh West itself, but it's close enough to warrant being considered. I don't know if that answers your question, Lisa, or sort of.
You always give great answers, Mr. Hall.
Yeah, I've got one more. So would staff have recommended approving these zone changes if there was not the soil contamination?
That's a good question. And I, I don't know. The soil contamination factored into it. The cell tower, the soil contamination, the excessive demolition, the isolation of the property because of the boundaries that it has. They all factor in and I'm not sure if you remove any one of those, if it, if it really warrants the change. Maybe not. I don't think it's, it's not, it's definitely not the only consideration, no. But it's, it's a, it's a principal one, sure.
Thank you.
Sure. I know Mike, the applicant had a couple of, of things he wanted to go over with you all. If that's, if this is a good time for that.
Yeah, are there any other questions for staff before we, or we can hear from the applicant and then address anything we have questions about?
Are you ready for me now?
Yes, we are. Thanks for making the call.
Thank you. My name is Michael Brodsky and my address is 84 West, 4800 South Murray, 84107. Thank you, Mr. Hall. And thank you, members of the planning commission for the time you're spending with me this evening. April 1st, I came in front of you with a fairly lengthy presentation supplementing what staff provided you as well. Tonight, I will not be quite as long winded. But I want to provide you with a quick summary of what we're doing and discuss with a little bit more detail, the few points that are new tonight. Much of what I have to say has already been covered by Mr. Hall and I will try not to repeat him. Again, our request is to rezone the 8.6 acres to a mix of R16 and RM15. It came out, this request actually came from one of your neighbors who was protesting this. And we, as we went into the April 1st meeting and read that suggestion, we thought that it was a pretty valid way of dealing with a lot of resident concerns. Unquestionably, had you granted the RM15 across the entire property, the property could have been developed for as many as 125 homes in a variety of different configurations. That suggestion gave us the ability to provide a zoning mix that limits the maximum density to what I am suggesting we'll build here. That's why we asked you, asked to come back. The original plan that I presented even before the April 1st meeting, we, we requested a neighborhood meeting because when that was first posted, we got such opposition. It became apparent that there was a need to educate the residents about what the issues were on the property and what we were suggesting. Based on the, the comments and feedback we got out of that meeting, we changed our plan pretty significantly. We eliminated a two acre park along Bullion Street and we reduced the density down from just 90 townhouses to 20 single family homes transitioning Bullion Street so that they were across from the existing homes and townhouses in the back. Granted, there is a neighborhood behind us, Walden Ridge subdivision where our townhouse is back to them. But we were careful to cite the end of our homes against the Walden community to minimize the privacy incursion. We've also talked with our builder about how those homes are to be designed. And for example, some of the issues that we're going to implement for the third story where the bedrooms are looking back to Walden. Instead of having full size windows, we will have transom windows to provide light into the rooms, but to provide privacy to the adjacent neighbors. And, and talking a little bit about the privacy issues to the Walden community. One of the things that mitigates the proximity of our townhouses to these homes is the distance. There's an 87 foot power corridor adjacent to our neighborhood. The setback to, from our houses to our property line and the setback from the single family homes to the property line provides about 125 feet from house to house. That's a pretty significant separation. The other thing that we looked at, we have done a survey of the entire property. We have, we know what the grades are today. We know that the first, well, we know that the existing grade of where our houses would be sighted are five to eight feet below the existing grade of the Walden houses. Additionally, we are proposing a fence along the property line. And when I tell you that there is a five to eight foot grade differential, I also want to be clear that I am not representing that as the final grade. The site, one of the challenges to it is that because of the way the satellite facility was built into a deep depression and because of the environmental cleanup, which I'll talk about in a little bit. Because of those issues, we have some very, very extensive grading to do. I'm very comfortable that when we are finished the grading, we're not raising the grade where these properties are adjacent to Walden. So the grade differential and the property line fence and the the transom windows in the bedrooms are going to go a long way to providing privacy for both our townhouses and the single family homes. Sorry, I get dry mouth very, very easily. One of the other things that has progressed since we met with you last is the environmental issue. You already know that the property is heavily contaminated with lead and arsenic. Our initial evaluation, we had a concern that the walls of the buildings were insulated with a material that had elevated levels of arsenic, not arsenic, excuse me, asbestos. The first thing we did when we went in there is drilled holes in the wall. And we were very thankful when we identified that there was no asbestos in the walls. We've had an environmental firm, Wausatch Environmental, onsite now for much of the last month doing initial investigation. We have applied to Department of Environmental Quality to be entered into their voluntary cleanup program. And within the last few days, they have accepted us into that program. I wanted to a fairly lengthy description last time about what that meant, but I will suffice to say that the entire cleanup process from designing the cleanup to implementation is directly overseen by the department. When we are onsite doing this cleanup, they have a staff member onsite with us looking over our shoulder. My, my presentation is not going to be much longer and I want to leave a lot of room for questions of the planning commission and residents, please. Couple of comments on traffic. We asked House Engineering, who was the traffic engineer that did the studies. In addition to the study, we also asked them for traffic calming recommendation. In tandem with meeting with the city engineer, they came back with a handful of suggestions. Mr. Hall has briefly gone over them and we would have every intention of implementing the traffic calming suggestions into our development plan. Parking, we've already talked about that. I want to talk very briefly about buyer demographics because this has a lot to do with a very integrated neighborhood. And integrated by, in the sense that it's an opportunity for people to stay in the neighborhood. The younger children growing up now have a chance to buy a more affordable home. I'm not going to insult your intelligence by telling you these townhouses are entry level. These townhouses are going to sell for close to $400,000. But it is still a very, relatively inexpensive home for this neighborhood. The single family homes that we're, we're suggesting here, their values will be in the $500,000 and $600,000 range. The buyers, the typical buyers, and I am reflecting on the demographic information that Hamlet Homes has collected on our buyers over years. Many of the, 40% of the buyers that we have sold these townhouses to over the years are what you would expect. Not entry level, but they're young professionals. They're 25 to 34 years old. They're in the beginning stages. They're 25 to 34 years old, they're in the beginning stages of starting their families. 25% of them are 35 to 44, a little bit more mature, a little bit older. But a statistic that surprised me when I first started building in Utah is that 34% of these buyers are 45 to plus 55 years old. They're empty nesters. They're people that want to stay in the neighborhood and can afford to buy something like this as a move-down. The others, you know, there were some concerns about what this would do to your school system. Another aspect is the demographic of who this buyer is. In that first group, they don't have children. The percentage of children in these neighborhoods between that young family and the move-down buyers are significantly lower than the number of children you get in a single-family detached home. So the potential impact on your school system is very, very mild. I think I have covered, I believe I've covered my points, but I would like to open this up to whatever questions you may have of me, please.
I'm sure that there are some questions from the commission. What questions you have for the applicant?
I just have one. The sequestering of the contaminated soil, is that going to be done, it looks like it's going to be done in the radius of the cell tower where it's unbuildable, is that correct?
That's our intention. So we have, part of the geotechnical investigation we've done is to identify the depths of the water table here. We have significant depth, and so we can overexcavate this area and create a repository that will be more than sufficient to handle whatever we have to move into it.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one quick question. I know that you'll be having mitigating protocol in place for when you start moving soil. Are you planning to have some kind of a grid system or something to keep dirt from being driven out onto Bullion Street and the dust collecting through the neighborhood? Are you going to have water trucks spraying so that keep the dust down? Or what are the efforts going to be to keep particulates from being airborne? And then also to keep dirt from being tracked out onto Bullion Street and affecting the neighborhood?
Good question, very good question. Because part of the VCP, the voluntary cleanup program, requires that we put monitors all around the perimeter of the property. And the monitors are to, on a daily basis, to test to make sure that we don't have any airborne particulars moving off the site. We do have water trucks on the site on a very regular basis. Part of pre-construction of this, before we put a shovel on the ground, is the SWIP plan, Storm Water Protection Program that we have to put in place, and it is very, very closely monitored. You have, your city has a department that comes out and very carefully, closely monitors the adherence to the SWIP. But more important, not even more importantly, but in addition to that, in this particular instance, you have DEQ monitoring it as well.
Mr. Brodsky,
Thank you.
There's still some concern that we have 4.64 acres that being requested to move to RM15 zone, which, I mean, in that zone, in that zone within the general plan, you can build up to 15 units per acre. So what kind of, and I know we're not talking about the plan that you've proposed. We're looking at the zoning that we're going to vote on or pass to the city council. But is there, there's no guarantees, but how do we get to a number of 55 townhomes there versus if you do the straight math of 4.64 acres times 15 units per acre, you get 69 dwelling units? So how is this commission supposed to evaluate that and think that we're still not going to end up with 69 units on the RM15 zone and 20 single-family units on the front? We still get up to 90 units?
You're absolutely correct that the RM15 will permit up to 15 homes per acre. However, I've been building in Murray now for 27 years. I don't have a count in front of me of the number of neighborhoods that were townhouses. But I will tell you that in more than 1,000 homes that I've built in townhouses in Murray, I have never been able to build 15 to an acre. In fact, I've never been able to build more than 12 because the bonus density, the difference between 12 and 15 homes to an acre is a calculation of bonus density. It deals with, among other things, affordable housing that provides restrictions on housing appreciation. It is a pretty significant disincentive for anybody to want to buy one of those homes. It also caps the sale price to make it fall within something like 70 or 80% of your AMI. Altogether, the bonus density that you can provide in this are just not economically feasible. And in 27 years, I have never seen a subdivision where I was able to use it.
I can interrupt and build on that statement just a little bit, just to drive home the point. That affordable, that affordable housing component that you'd have to provide also has to get guaranteed to us as a city for 50 years and reported on on a yearly basis. And in terms of development, there's just almost no way to comply with that requirement. And that's one of, I wouldn't even know how to count them. There's three columns of different requirements that you have to meet to get all the way to that 15 units. It's just, it's almost impossible. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional questions for the applicant right now? Okay. If not, then I think we'll move to the public comment portion of this meeting. We are grateful that we've had so much public comment. We have had numerous emails included in our packets that was given to us days before this meeting. So we have had a chance to read over and thoroughly review all of those comments. We have also received emails since we received our packets, and those comments will be read into the record tonight. We are thankful for the public input and appreciate your comments for this meeting and the previous meeting. We have reviewed all of those comments. In the interest of time, we ask that if you have submitted an email comment, that you do not make an additional live comment this evening. We have read those comments and we've thoroughly reviewed them. If you would like to submit an email comment and have not done so yet, you can do that by emailing planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. Or if you are participating during, through the Zoom webinar registration and you are planning to make a live comment, we ask that you click the raise your hand button. If you are making a live comment, we ask that you offer new information that has not been presented in the email comments that will be read into the record. And we ask that you do not rehash comments or things that have already been stated, that you present new information, and that you limit your comments to three minutes. We know that there are a lot of comments on this, and so we ask for the sake of everyone's interest, the time, that you limit your comments to three minutes. And with that, we will begin with the email comments that we have tonight to be read into the record. So we'll start there.
Susan and Zach, you guys were going to read those in, correct?
Yes.
All right, I'll leave you to it.
Okay, to clarify, the emails we will be reading are the ones we received after 2:00 PM last Friday, which were not included with the planning commission packets up through today.
2:00 PM Tuesday.
2:00 PM on Tuesday, Susan, right? The Friday ones, we only had, we had a limited number before Friday when the packet went out. Between Friday and Tuesday afternoon, we received more. Those are what are going to be read right now.
Correct, yes, yes.
Sorry, between Friday and Tuesday, we received more. We sent those in an email packet, an additional packet to the commission. And what we're going to read now are the ones that came in after Tuesday afternoon, between then and now, sorry.
That is, thank you, perfect. Too many deadlines, too many packets. Okay, so the first one we received was on Tuesday, May 4th, from Joyce Jones, resident at 5647 Blue Barn Circle. And she reads, she stays, "I am writing to you about the zone change on Bullion. I really disagree with changing it to RM15. It would allow way too many homes to be built on this small land. It isn't, it just isn't right. There is never enough parking planned or grassy areas planned to make it really nice. I understand the change to R16. They would be small lots, but would give more people a chance to have a home. Three-story townhomes are just too many homes. I'm too small of an acre. They would look right on, right down on the backyards of the beautiful homes behind them. To save the zone changes needed to make the project financially viable, to remove the smelter tailings at this superfund site is false. There will be other developers that will have the know-how to deal with these tailings, and they will still make a fortune with homes in an R16 zone. We are making a concession to agree to R16. These townhomes do not fit in the middle of a nice neighborhood." And looking up what a townhome is, I read that in quotes. "In general, townhomes tend to be located in large cities and urban areas where single-family homes are more expensive or non-existent. This means the location of a townhome is ideal for those who love living near urban centers, great restaurants, and slew of entertainment options, parks, and public transportation." Close quote. "This description does not match the description of our townhomes. Ours are not near a city center. It is not near great restaurants or public transportation. It is also not like the land that you just rezoned on Fashion Place Mall for this reason. Parking in this area is also huge, is also a huge concern to me. Everything that is going up in Murray lately seems to be lacking in parking. We do not want the cars parked up and down our street. 100 more cars going up and down Bullion would definitely make a difference in our traffic situation, no matter what the new gimmick come up with to tell us. It will work. I live on Bullion, and my daughter with four children under the age of eight live across the street on Bullion. These children and I cross this street every day. Trying to walk out between parked cars to cross the street is just not safe when it is as busy as a street will become. This street should not become a main thoroughfare, and the neighbors, and the neighborhoods below cannot handle this much traffic either if 55 townhomes go in. I am not in favor of the way this developer wants to handle the soil contamination issue. I do not like the idea of just burying and capping it. I think it needs to be removed from the area. I don't know much about this, as most people don't. But I think further studies should be made on how this should and could be contained. The RM15 zone change is against the general plan, and we all worked hard to keep and develop it, and it is not all congruent with the present R18 zone. Although the RM15 zone change doesn't make sense and isn't just right, allowing the RM15 zone change just, it doesn't make sense and isn't right. We need a zone change that will limit this developer even more from putting in 55 three-story townhomes. It is just too many and makes no sense at all. It would be an atrocity. There has to be other options. Please do not change the city's plan to benefit only the developer. Other landowners around here will want the townhomes as well if you give in to this developer. Please say no and listen to the local community. We all want a beautiful city that can, that we can enjoy. Be brave and do the right thing. Thanks for listening." The next one was from Mike Myers, received on May 4th. Excuse me, Michael and Janet Myers. "To whom it may concern, we have lived on Walden Hills for 35 years, and we strongly disagree with the building of these units. This is a single-family home subdivision, and it should remain that way. The schools will be overcrowded, there is not parking for that many places, and we feel it will decrease the value of our properties. With that many units, the traffic alone will be tremendous. So in, so in our option, we vote no. We feel like there was not enough notice posting and like it was being done under the radar. We feel like so many units are just too many. We just, we can't just build single-family homes like the rest of the neighborhood. I believe all the neighborhood feels the same." Thank you, Michael and Janet Myers. The next one is from Gary and Barbara Strang, residents at 1082 West Walden Park Drive, received on May 4th. "After decades of master plan limiting residential development to 8,000 square feet or larger-sized lots, it seems inconsistent to take a parcel right in the middle of an established conformant single-family neighborhood and allow multifamily development. Its impact on the area, not its impact on an area master plan for this type of development creates many problems for area residents. Other developments like Walden Ridge adjacent to this parcel were required to conform with the master plan. I would hope the planning commission and city council will resist outside pressure to change this master plan, particularly on this parcel." And the next one is from Chris Burnett. Chris Burnett and Annie Yu, residents at 981 West Walden Ridge Drive, received May 5th. "Hi, first I want to say thank, thank you for all you do to help make Murray a great place to live. My wife and I are new to the city, and thus far we have loved our experience in this great city. That being said, as a Murray citizen, we do not like to voice our opposition against the RM15. We are, however, in favor of the R16 single-family zoning. Thank you for all that you do. Best, Chris and Burnett and Annie Yu." And the next one is from Jim Brass, a resident received on May 5th. "Dear commission members, I am very concerned about the precedent that could be set if the zone change is approved. The four-year-old general plan and future land use map both have A1 zones transitioning to R18 within the city boundaries. If you make this change, it can and likely will impact any A1 zone in the city. This is a precedent that could have serious implications for existing neighborhoods throughout Murray. By denying the change, you are not saying no. You are not saying that development cannot happen on this property. You are simply saying that we should stick to the plan envisioned for the neighborhood and others that might be impacted in the future. Single-family homes would be a nice addition to the area. While I like Hamlet Development as a developer, it is not the city's place to assure that the project pencils for the developer. I recognize that there are environmental issues that affect profitability of anything built here, but again, not a city's problem. Finally, once the zone is changed, anything allowed in the RM15 zone can be built on this parcel in the future. We have seen vastly different projects built after a zone has been changed. My personal favorite is the Mountain Medical Building on Woodrow Street. The original request was for a single-story drive-through bank. Instead, the neighbors got a two-story medical office building, and eventually the whole Woodrow neighborhood disappeared. Thank you for your time and consideration, Jim Brass." Okay, back to the order. The next one from Preston Andrew, received on May 5th. "Murray city officials, as many other residents have expressed, I'm not comfortable breaking with the general plan to accommodate such a wide jump in the requested zoning proposal. Let me further elaborate how dangerous a precedent this would set for the city of Murray. For those that are not familiar with the general plan or even understand what it is, I'd like to give some color to what went into the development of it. Here are some of the high-level bullet points. The plan took two and a half to three years to complete. The total expense of the plan was over $100,000, not including the internal man-hours associated. Multiple townhome meetings and 10 or more public input hearings took place. There needs to be a strong basis for such a drastic change, and I haven't heard it from our city officials. This isn't an issue that should be driven by real estate development groups. Murray should be grounded in its approach with dealing with our complex growth demands. If the general plan isn't leading the way, then what is? Is the voice of a developer or select Murray officials greater than the consensus of the broader majority? I'm in full support of high-density development in the appropriate zone areas. That's what's made Murray a special and unique community. There has always been a balanced and thoughtful blend..." There has always been a balanced and thoughtful blend, blend for all types of development. This would be breaking with that approach and would open the floodgates to amen zoning throughout the greater Murray City, throughout greater Murray City. This decision shouldn't be made lightly, as it will be, it will have a broader impact for our officials that have plans to run against in their current capacity or otherwise. We won't, we want to vote for officials that represent and reflect the opinions of its residents. Please respect the agreement that was made between Murray City and its citizens when creating the general plan. Thanks." Next one is Ashley Clark, received on May 5th. Resident at 774 West Anderson Avenue. "Thank you for taking the time to represent us in the planning meeting. I'm concerned with the building project at 935 Bullion Street. We need to maintain some single-family communities in Murray. That is why Murray people love Murray and want to stay. There are other places to build multifamily homes where there are currently multifamily, where there are currently multifamily homes. North of 5300, South and Third West. This is an empty property. We can be creative on places to build multifamily homes. Dozens of people bought homes in the neighborhoods surrounding Bullion Street knowing we are in single-family home zoning. Please let us keep our neighborhood single-family home. We have protected our single-family home neighborhoods up to this point. Let us keep doing that. We love Murray because we love our single-family home community." The next one is Sherry Leydlaw, received on May 5th. "Murray City officials, as many other residents have expressed, I'm not comfortable breaking with the general plan to accommodate such a wide jump in the requested zoning proposal. Let me further elaborate how dangerous a precedent this would set for Murray City. The plan took two and a half to three years to complete. The total expense of the plan was over a hundred thousand dollars, not including the internal man-hours associated. Multiple townhomes, multiple hall meetings, and ten or more public input hearings took place. There needs to be a strong basis for such a drastic change, and I haven't heard it from our city officials. This isn't an issue that should be driven by real estate developer, development groups. Many, many, many should go grounded in its approach when dealing with our complex growth demands. If the general plan isn't leading the way, then what is? Is the voice of the developer or select Murray officials greater than the consensus of the broader majority? I'm in full support of the high-density development in the appropriately zoned areas. That's what has made Murray a special and unique community. There has also been a balanced and thoughtful blend of all types of development. This would be breaking with that approach and would open the floodgates to amen zoning throughout the greater Murray City. This decision shouldn't be made lightly, as it will have broader impact for our officials that have plans to run against, to run again in their current capacity or otherwise. We want to vote for officials that represent and reflect the opinions of its residents. Please respect the agreement that was made between Murray City and its citizens when creating the general plan." And lastly is from Ally Liddell, resident at 869 West Walden Hills Drive, received on May 5th. "Hello, Susan. I wish to register, register a comment for tomorrow's zoning committee meeting. I am opposed to the proposed zoning change. The property in Murray is so valuable right now that there is no way someone wouldn't find a way to develop the property with the existing zoning. Residents surrounding the property, including myself, bought homes here because of the kind of neighborhood it is, single-family homes. I don't believe the results of the traffic study were accurate, conducted in an artificially low-impact time during COVID. And I asked that the commission, to, I asked that the commission deny the zoning change. Thank you, Ally Liddell." Okay, it's next turn.
Yes, now it's my turn. All right. This is an addendum to a previous letter submitted on March 29th, 2021, by Lisa Hollinger. "I remember sitting in a choir class at Murray High School, and Mayor Lynn Pett walked in. I was stunned, but I felt his love for us as high school students. I was honored he cared enough to attend our choir class. He was excited to announce the new Jordan River Trail that day, now one of my favorite amenities in Murray City. Worth noting is one who traverses that trail often, Murray City is the best city in terms of trail maintenance. It is commendable. Murray is a little slice of suburb right next to downtown Salt Lake City. Many who arrive in Murray never leave. However, it's no secret that with locations like Daybreak, Riverton, and Saratoga Springs exploding, people are leaving Murray and heading south. It's alarming on some levels. I am told from parents with children in Murray schools that many good teachers are also leaving. Trends to be observed and analyzed. If Murray City changes the master plan and puts townhomes on 935 Bullion, more city residents will depart. People are already threatening to move. It saddens me. I was disappointed in the planning commission meeting held Thursday, April 1st, 2021, with Murray City residents. Murray City officials were so deferential to Mr. Brodsky, as they should be, that I was waiting for someone to say, 'Thank you, Murray City residents, for spending an entire evening, very valuable time, to join in the dialogue and participate with us. Perhaps I missed it, but I heard nothing remotely close to that, especially at the very end of the meeting. Murray City officials talked and laughed and then took a break right at the beginning of the meeting. Residents were given no time to speak because of the unexpected outcome. That long meeting could have been streamlined to take care of Mr. Brodsky and residents alike. That kind of organization makes people not want to participate in city politics. We loved Mayor Pett because he took time for and cared about high school students. I hope that still holds true. Please show you care for your people by sticking to the master plan for 935 Bullion. This sets a dangerous precedent to start rezoning things. I know Murray is short on housing. The whole valley is that way right now. But there are other locations in Murray. AISU, we have not been able to keep a business there very long since the Forty-Ninth Street Galleria closure. Why not put townhomes or condos there? That area is already a C of apartments and townhomes, and the current Hamlet development already exists right there. If there's pressure from some outside or inside source to rezone this land, or a sense of acting on fear that Mr. Brodsky is the only person who will develop that land, it's time to think bigger. The city's reputation is on the line, and no one seems to think that the Mash Farm Estate lots for sale on Murray's east side should have been rezoned as townhomes. Those lots are selling between three hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand, as I understand it. So if not, why put townhomes on 935 Bullion? This could be viewed as an east-side, west-side bias. Please do not cave to the pressure to build townhomes there during this unprecedented pandemic. Other lucrative options exist for the city. Thank you for your time spent in reading this letter. Best regards, Lisa Hollinger." Next is by Sachi and Nate Jepson. "Dear Planning Commission, we are opposed to building condos or townhomes on Bullion Street. Hearing the responses from the applicant and the planning commission so far, we appreciate everyone's hard work on this issue. However, the commission's consideration of constituent concerns has felt somewhat dismissive. The message to Bullion residents seems to be, 'Come up with a concern that we can't refute with the study, and maybe we'll consider not changing the zoning.' That is confusing. These decisions certainly feel poignant to those living on Bullion, as we do, and immediately surrounding it. Traffic is going to increase. Our lives will be impacted in many ways, and our concerns remain valid. But the commission finds these changes, such as the level of traffic increase, quote, acceptable, according to this, to the studies they've seen. This really seems to put the burden on the constituents as if to say, quote, 'It's your duty to convince us not to change the zoning, and if you don't succeed, we're changing it.' That seems backwards. And that attitude would require constituents to express a concern that the commission cannot refute with a study. That is just not possible. There is a study out there to refute any concern. We are not claiming these studies are inaccurate, but that is how studies work. If we constituents and voters who are represented by the city council, who live right adjacent to this property are saying, 'We bought into this neighborhood and brought our families here in reliance on the common scheme, and we don't want it rezoned,' it seems to us this should carry significant weight. We have spoken to many neighbors about this issue. Our neighbors have overwhelmingly expressed that they are not opposed to development, but they feel strongly about it being in keeping with the common scheme. If someone is trying to change that scheme, we do not understand how it should be the burden of the residents who are most dramatically impacted by such change, and again, who put their life savings and hopes and dreams into this neighborhood in reliance on the common scheme, to convince everyone to refrain from rezoning. We are expressing our valid concerns that this is not a positive change in our view as the people who live immediately around the property. We support the development of single-family homes here. Sincerely, Sachi and Nate Jepson, 858 Bullion Street." Next is, it just says Murray Citizen/Resident. "To whom it may concern, within eight hundred to a thousand feet away, project number 20-058 requested medium to high-density housing. The decision to rezone was denied less than a year ago on July 16th, 2020. This new Hamlet development project, if it were to approve any medium to high-density housing, would be discrimination. Equality in, in the decision of these developments should remain intact with previous precedents set, especially given the close proximity of like-housing in zoned areas. To be clear, the developer on project number 20-058 requested medium to high-density housing. That request was denied, and I request that this new project also be denied for the same reasons. This, along with the many other concerns expressed, I urge this planning commission to vote no, remain consistent, and stick to the Murray City general slash master plan." Next was from Shannon Meckling. "Dear Mayor Patterson, Ned Hacker, Travis Nay, Sue Wilson, Lisa Milkovich, Jake Pearson, Jeremy Lowry, we are emailing to let you know that we are adamantly opposed to changing the zoning on Bullion Street. We would like to go on the record as stated, opposed to this zone change. Changing the master plan for this rezoning and requested building projects sets a precedent that we are not comfortable with for a variety of reasons that have been stated previously by many others. Please note our voices as a no to changing the master plan on Bullion Street. Sincerely, Dan and Shannon Meckling, 789 Shadow Wood Drive." Next is from Court McClaus. "To whom it concerns, I am opposed to the zoning change on Bullion Street in Murray, Utah. These structures being proposed don't match our current landscape and would cause too much traffic in an area that is already congested. I think it should be developed with a few family homes that would fit into the neighborhood and add to the beauty of Murray. If we allow this change, it could affect future change as well that isn't in the best interest of Murray or its residents. Thank you, Court McClaus." Next is from Katie McClaus. "To whom it concerns, I am opposed to the change of the zoning on Bullion Street. I don't think a group of structures of that size would fit into the landscape or be in the best interest in the city of Murray. I think a few houses built on the seven acres would be okay, but I am opposed to changing this into a medium-density housing development. I think the impact would not be good from a safety perspective. It would also overcrowd our schools and doesn't impact Murray or the neighborhood in a good way. I hope this is reconsidered. Katie McClaus." Next is from Daryl Lopez. "To whom it may concern, I know I have commented in the past in this issue, and I would hope that the concerns I expressed in the past would still be considered, and I would not have to restate them. Having said that, I want you to know that I was beginning to somewhat soften my position in consideration for the minor adjustments the developer has made. However, something happened last night that has caused me to stiffen my position again. Last night, I had the misfortune of having the back window broken out of one of my vehicles. I did the right thing and reported the issue to the police. Officer Black of the Murray City Police responded, and we had a nice and informative conversation. As the conversation went on, we discussed the rise in property crimes over the past little while. Officer Black remarked that whenever these high-density developments come into Murray, the crime in those areas do rise. He went on to say that Murray keeps telling the police department that they won't do any more. Then here comes another one, and another headache for them. Now, I don't know who he is referring to as the party speaking from Murray City or the police department, but the point being, an officer is concerned, like most of the Bullion residences are, that crime will increase with the increased population. I would also like to again express my concern as to who Jared of Murray City is representing. I feel it is unacceptable for him to ask you to approve the rezoning as he did in the last meeting. He is a Murray City employee working for all the citizens of Murray, not just the developers. He should simply present the facts as they exist without using his leverage to sway the commission's opinions. I believe he should simply comment on the legal, legal function aspects of the project. He should definitely not recommend any decision, one way or another. He should be reprimanded on this issue. Thank you, Daryl Lopez." And lastly is from Donna Blackett. "To whom it may concern, my permission, position has not changed on this issue. Thank you, Donna." And that would be it. You have not received anything else in the email.
Okay, great.
We do have two hands raised, though.
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna say. Let's move on from the email portion to the live comments. And again, I just want to remind you, anything that has already been talked about in our emails, please present new information and keep your comments to three minutes.
Yes.
Hi, will you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Stacy Garcia, and I am at 940 Chesterbrook Cove, directly behind where this development is going to go.
Thank you, and what was the comment?
Well, when he was, when Pearson was talking about the height earlier, I believe it was him talking about the height of this project. I'm looking out my window right now, and the bottom of their fence line is above the top of my back fence line, so it's going to be tall. There's not going to be any privacy. I, I don't see how they're gonna do this unless they're gonna haul some dirt away. The second thing I'd like to state is Murray City School District, because I work for Murray School District, and I work over here at Riverview Junior High, but it will impact. They are doing no online schooling next year. It will all be in person, and we will have our full numbers at capacity next school year. Same goes for the elementary school. So there will be an increase. It will impact us. And those are the two. The other thing was the contamination. I'm worried about how he's gonna handle that. So those are my concerns.
Great, thank you for being with us tonight. Um, our other comment?
Yes, hold on, sorry, it's taking me just a second.
All right, thank you. I apologize for this.
Thanks for being with us tonight. Will you state your name and record for the name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor. My name is Joe Christensen, and I wanna, I live at 1184 West Hickman Cove. I've actually owned four homes now in the Walden-Bullion-Hidden Oaks area, so I'm very familiar with this area. In fact, it was probably Mayor Pett who brought me to Murray with his vision for this area. I probably first looked at the city's master plan for this area, as well as future plan, twenty years ago when I bought my first home, so I'm very familiar with what the city's vision has been for this property. I want to start by saying it's interesting to hear Gary Strange's letter read early on in the citizen letter section of this call or this Zoom. It's interesting because, for those who know Gary, he's actually developed several of the communities in this immediate vicinity, and he's a developer who played by the rules. So when he says developers have done what the city's asked for years and years and years, he's speaking as someone who truly understands what the process is. He's speaking as someone who truly understands what the process is. Now, I also want to let you know that I'm part of the Stop Nine Thirty-Five Bullion Project, so I'm not speaking for myself tonight. I'm speaking for hundreds and hundreds of residents in the Murray community, the West Murray community who absolutely oppose this project. The opposition to this project, uh, it's in line, it probably exceeds the opposition that we've seen in our valley for projects such as Cottonwood Mall. So tonight you're sitting through a, um, planning meeting with citizens who are online who have a level of opposition to this project that is significant and extreme. In fact, when we've done surveys, when we've gone around and talked to communities, if you look at our Stop Nine Thirty-Five Facebook page, you'll see that the opposition rates are somewhere between ninety and ninety-five percent for this project. Now, I want to talk to a few points during this meeting. Jared has spent a lot of time in support of this project. As previous people have said, um, we're concerned by this because really, and Jared said that he's here to represent the community. Really, community is the citizens themselves. It's not the interests or the wills of a developer. So I, our concern from the perspective of some of the stuff Jared shared is the fact that he's not representing Murray. He's representing, we're not sure, but it's definitely not the, the interests of the citizens here in our area. Let's talk about some of his points profitability. Or I'm sorry, palatability of this project tonight. He said that this project's become more palatable over the last few months as Mike Brodsky's discussed this with us. That's not the case. When we go out and we discuss it with people in this community, that area from Seventh West to Thirteenth, from fifty-four to I two fifteen, the opposition levels have not wavered. There's still ninety to ninety-five percent of the people who oppose it in this area. Let's talk about the mixed housing types and affordability because that's been brought up multiple times. I want to point to one of Mike's projects in Murray, Granton Square. If you look at projects over there right now, those projects exceed a half million dollar, those homes exceed a half million dollars. The nine acres per unit that's been brought up. If you include the frontage road or the city road as well as the cell towers in that project, you get to the RM fifteen, but if you subtract those from the projects, it's close to RM twenty, which is inconsistent and incongruent with the community. Uh, Jake asked, you asked, Jared, are you advocating for a proposal that the city wants? No, he is not. The people in this area oppose it. Jared asked, or Jake, you asked again, would you support this project without the remediation needs? And that's the cure problem here. As a city, we're discussing a dramatic change for our zoning, nine levels to accommodate the profit goals of Mr. Brodsky. The never, the city should never put a developer's profitability over the general future plan. And likewise, the city should never put profitability of a project over the interests of the citizens of the community. And again, ninety to ninety-five percent of the citizens in this area oppose this project. Probably problematic for multiple areas. Um, but, but I just want to end with three points about this project. First of all, the city has a social contract for those on Chesterbrook. Those on Chesterbrook for years have leased land from Utah P and L because the city misaligned or didn't capture the correct zoning and plot map or lines for that area. If Mr. Brodsky does his project, it's gonna encroach on the people on Chesterbrook and it's gonna take land away from them that they've been renting from UPNL for years and years, which is a violation of a commitment that the city made when they made a mistake with the original zoning. Next, and, and this is also a little bit, uh, problematic, um, to us.
Sir, you have ten seconds left to finish your comments.
But
you have your, you've had your five minutes?
The city made a social contract to us. You committed to what this area is. This is R one eight, this is open land, this is public space. You made a social contract and it's been that way for more than a half century. We are asking the board to honor that promise to us because this does set a precedence that will continue across the city. If this is approved, when your neighbors, Maron, Ned, Travis, Sue, Lisa, Jake, Jeremy, when they buy the neighbor or the property next to them and decide that they want to build or rezone, we're not gonna have a leg to stand on. This can happen anywhere in the Murray community once we approve this.
Comment, Mr. Christensen. Uh, Zach, are there any other additional hands raised?
Yes, there, there's one additional. Hold on one moment. Okay.
My name is Dan Fazini and I live in the Walden Meadows subdivision. Uh, and I'm a past Talesville City.
Would you state your address for the record?
I don't wish to. I don't think it's pertinent. I live in the neighborhood. Um, uh, I'm a past Talesville City planning commissioner and, uh, my five years on the commission, we saw, rarely saw this level of opposition to any application. When there are significant comments, we highly scrutinized the application. Having more than five residents oppose the project was extremely unusual. Uh, and much less a hundred or more as we're seeing throughout this process the last couple of months. Uh, in general, I appreciate the applicant's efforts to listen and mitigate the concerns which were, uh, I have to give them credit that I haven't seen that before. Uh, the overall project is for a density of more than three times of that of the surrounding homes. Uh, when you overlay those eight acres on the adjacent homes to the north. The buffer mentioned of the seventy-five feet or so, or using the roadway or the UPNL corridor. You know, buffers are meant to be termed as incremental zones, not just seventy-five feet of space. There may be additional space as well, as was mentioned in the pre-meeting, uh, of just west of the power lines, which is about two point two acres that could be built there. The RM fifteen requires a twenty-five foot setback for both the front and rear. They are sharing the setback between the buildings. There's only twenty-five feet between the buildings on the non-driveway side and the driveway's twenty-six feet for the plan, uh, to get that density. If the city is truly interested in addressing the low medium housing issue, they would have not put a moratorium on mixed use, mixed uses just a few months ago. Uh, the legislation proposed that was mentioned at the previous meeting and later amended a couple of years ago, never required all areas of the city to support higher densities and were focused more on low moderate income housing, which this proposal clearly is not. The staff report talks about moderate income housing. And I'm not sure if this will qualify, but in the general plan regardless, the context is citywide, not every acre in the city. Um, compatible housing types. I respectfully disagree to Jared's statement earlier that I don't think this is compatible with the neighborhood. Make no mistake, this will be a significant increase for, uh, significant increase in traffic for Walden residents. Most of them will go out out of Howell Springs unless they're only going to Midvale. Everything else is accessed off of fifty-four hundred south to get on the freeway. So you don't have to make a left turn on the Seventh West. That means we'll probably see a larger share of that twenty percent increase in traffic and I live off that road.
You have ten seconds to wrap up.
Okay. Uh, this is not well-served by, uh, develop, a well-served development for transit or active transportation. That the closest bus stop is a mile away.
That's time.
Application moves forward. Uh, I, I asked that the city or the application, uh, the recommendation is for R one six for the entire property. Uh, as that's a small incremental change. Thank you.
Comment. Um, any additional? Hands raised?
No, I don't see any. Actually, yes, there is another one. Hold on one.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you for being here. Will you state your name and address for the record?
Sure. My name is Heidi Bryan and I live at fifty-five fifty-five White Springs Drive. I want to make sure first of all, my comments were received by the commission. I sent them in, I believe it was Monday morning. I hope you were able to read those and I appreciate that attention. Um, my question is this. With all of the negative comments and the amount of comments uh, that are against this, how can the commission go forward with this? I, I don't understand that and I wondered if there was maybe somebody who could, who could help me understand that because if there are so many against it, why are we even pushing this again? That's my comment. Thank you for your, for your, um, answers.
Any other additional comments?
Uh, no.
Okay. And then at this time, I would like to close the public comment portion, um, of this meeting. And we are grateful for all of the comments that we got from the public and we, um, would like to address and maybe go over some of those, you know, frequently commented or, you know, frequently brought up and issues. Um, I don't know if there's like a place you want to start, Jared, about.
Yeah, I'm gonna, let me, let me start kind of at the the end and work backwards if that's, if that's okay, just a little bit. To, to try to to, to try to treat the, the last comment, um, just now, Ms. Ms. Bryan's comment about why it's still being considered. I, I think it's important to point out that the commission hasn't made any decisions, nothing. I, I know sometimes there's a sentiment among the community that things are a foregone conclusion. That's never the case. Um, the planning commission is considering the applications tonight. Frankly, because under the fourteenth amendment, he's guaranteed that you will consider his applications without, we, we can't. If there were four thousand negative comments, we would bring it forward tonight, even if we were recommending denial. As a staff, we would bring it forward to the commission for the commission to review it in the public. That's the way it works. So that's really the, that's the reason it's being considered. Uh, in spite of, in spite of the many, many comments in opposition to it. I, I hope that makes sense. And it is not a decided thing and staff, we recognize how, um, how much conflict this kind of an application does create. So we're sensitive to that. The, another, another concern I wanted to try to address, the, the traffic concerns, I, I don't know what to do with those other than to look to the traffic study. And again, we have to make, in fairness, we have to make our recommendations based on that. You are not obligated as a commission to approve or to recommend approval of a zone change like this. You're, you are a recommending body. Um, traffic concerns notwithstanding, we don't see traffic concerns as a staff. If it was R one six completely as a development, if it were all being zoned R one six, we wouldn't see traffic as an issue. All zoned as RM fifteen, we didn't see it as a traffic issue. That doesn't mean that it should go forward on its face. But traffic is not, um, traffic impacts we don't feel like will be severe enough to warrant saying no um, to the, to the project just based on the traffic, but it's only one of several concerns that have been raised. Um, and that's true. There was a comment that referenced, um, one of the comments referenced that was read into the record referenced um, application item twenty oh five eight uh, as an, as a zone change that was similar, that was for residential, high density residential or medium density residential that was turned down. Uh, application twenty oh five eight was actually a preliminary subdivision application for the tri-lane subdivision. It was approved for preliminary approval. I don't know. So I'm not sure what the comments referencing. I wish I could, I wish I could, um, speak to that better. Um, there's, there were more comments about the precedent. Again, I, I would reiterate that I don't think as a staff member in, in my professional experience, this is not a precedent setter. This is an isolated incident and we, I don't know how things work in every other city. I can't speak to that, but for me as a professional staff person and for this commission and for our city council, from my observations, this is not a precedent. Things are considered on their merits as individual projects, as individual applications. So, um, one other thing uh, that's probably, that I should probably, well, that I would like to speak to, although I don't have anything definitive to say. Uh, there, there was some mention of, of mashed farm estates and the lots there and how much those lots are worth and this being an east side, west side or potentially an east side, west side consideration. That never entered, uh, I, I will tell you candidly as a staff person, that never entered my mind until that comment came through. Mashed farm estates is expensive. That's true. And there is, there is no doubt in my mind that if you were to divide properties up anywhere in this valley, not just in Murray City into large lots and put houses on them, eventually they would sell. Until they don't and the second crash happens or whatever you want to see, but that's the, the price of a lot, the price of the home is not the only consideration in considering, it's not the only factor when you're considering the affordability of housing. It's one of the factors. It's not the only thing that we're considering. We talk about affordability of housing in this valley or in Murray City. So that brings me kind of around to one of the other points that got made. The general plan, th- there's not a strong enough case from the general plan to make this decision. I, I respectfully disagree. We look at this general plan and all of the different aspects of it, all of the objectives that this kind of zone change can meet or can serve, can support and feel like it has merit. That doesn't mean that it has to be approved. We're just making the case. Cause I think somebody's comment was that, um, as, as a staff person, I need to represent the city and not the developer. With all due respect to Mike, I don't care if he goes broke tomorrow or makes a penny on the project. I don't look at his profitability on a project. I don't know what it would be. I don't know how much money he's gonna make off of the project if it's one way or another. We look at this project and the application according to the general plan and we see merit in making the change. There are some arguments to be made against it based on the general plan as well. We feel like as a staff, why we recommend it for it is because the arguments for it outweigh those arguments against it. It does more good than harm. In our opinion, it, it can do a lot of good for some of our objectives that are tough to meet and we don't have to balance the budget of affordability of, of housing on every single lot in every single part of the city. That's absolutely true. That's not what we're trying to do. Um, and I don't think that that statement is borne out by this application either. This is a, an opportunity that we feel like as staff the city should take advantage of. Um, not because it makes Mike Brodsky money, but because it provides a mix of housing that helps to stabilize some of our housing problems in Murray and in the valley. And we take those chances where we can if we can support them by the general plan. And I think we've laid out that case. If that's not the case, then, then we move on and do, and do affordability of housing in other places and we won't stop working on projects in the transit corridors, et cetera. Um, those are always gonna be, um, recommended by staff as well. That's part of what we're doing. It, it is tough in a, in a, in a situation like this. It was mentioned a couple of times. How many people in this area are opposed to this project and the great majority of them are. That's absolutely true. Uh, and our job is, as it was, as it was mentioned, my job is to represent Murray City. And there are fifty-two thousand people in the city and they all adopted this general plan together as a group with those open houses and things that were mentioned. And part of this general plan is that map. And, and part of this general plan also are those goals and objectives that have become more and more important as these last six years have gone on, as these last four years of the plan have gone on, some of those objectives have come into more clarity than they had when we adopted them. And that's part of the reason that I am as a staff member recommending it. And that's never my goal to be popular or to support the the profitability of any particular project or developer. But if the application meets the goals of the general plan and carries enough weight, then I will recommend for it regardless of what people think about that. So I'm not sure what else I could really speak to.
Can I about to expand about the general plan? Um, I get the sense in reading a lot of the comments or, or things that people have posted that there's an idea that the general plan is like a rigid, um, like has to be like maintained like the way it was set out. Um, and, and the advice that was given like is set in stone. Um, but, and maybe because we are dealing with changes to the general plan on a regular basis as a commission. I don't know if you can speak to how it's, you know, it's a guiding document. It's not a rigid document. Do you know what I'm saying? Like we, we deal with changes to the general plan on a regular basis. So I don't, I don't know if speaking to that might help some of those people that have this rigid idea of like what the general plan set out to say was supposed to happen to this property is like a rigid thing that needs to be carried out?
Sure. Uh, that's a, that's a great point. And we are probably more familiar with with the frequency of those changes and the subtleties of those change, changes that have been made and get proposed than, than folks that don't see this all the time until a project comes up that's in their neighborhood. Let me go ahead and share my screen again really quickly if I can. Um, can you all see that? I'm gonna go back to just, just to speak to that point. I'm gonna go back to this, to this slide. Again, this is, we make a full evaluation of the general plan every ten years at least, or we should. Every five years, we should make a pretty good evaluation of where we're headed and make big adjustments if we need to, but this is, all of Utah's the fastest growing state in the United States of America and we are in the middle of the metropolitan statistical area at the heart of that fastest growing state in the United States of America. So to assume that nothing can change is, is just not reasonable. It's not to say that things can't stay the same either, but there are instances where we should consider those potential changes and that's what we've tried to do here. In support of that, In support of that, we, we had, Zach had looked at some different cities and how often they had made, uh, they had processed nearby rezones and general plan amendments. And that's what you're seeing in that table there. Um, so again, this is happening all over, all over the valley. People have to make adjustments because our world is changing fast. So we may even have to make more adjustments than we're comfortable making at times. All that is not to say that every adjustment is always justified. We say, and I, I think this is a good moment to, to explain this too. We as a city, as a staff, we reject a lot more than we come forward with. I think I mentioned in the pre-meeting um, that I had met with Mike. Probably a year ago, uh, various staff members, Susan and Zach and I met with him after that as well, talking about whether or not we would as a staff support this change. And there are no sure things. We looked at the general plan. We told them we needed to take a little time. We looked at the general plan, looked at some of these issues. And came back and said, yeah, we think we would support that change. We think there's something to be gained by asking that question and seeing if it gets approved. But way more often than not, we reject people out of the door for many changes to the general plan that get asked for. Only the ones that we, that are either really stubborn applicants who won't take our advice, that it's not worth asking. Or that we feel like as a staff, we can support. Make the, uh, make the application and ask for the change and not all of those get approved. There's never a guarantee. So as a staff, we, we recommend to you as a, as a commission, what we think is the most reasonable course of action, but, you as a commission have to decide if you, if you feel the same. So again, you're right, man. They're just not static documents. They're meant to be guiding documents. They don't have a lot of hard line numbers in them to reach. They have goals and objectives and strategies and that's what we've based our, our recommended change on.
Jared, can I ask you a question? Um, Mr. Christensen referenced a, a land lease for the Chesterbrook and in the Chesterbrook area. Um, and he referenced some, some rights being, being, um, the, well, basically the lease being encroached on and uh, rights being infringed upon. Do you know what that's referencing?
I believe that, let me get to a slide. I, I don't know about leases. That, that's not something I'm privy to. I think that he was talking about this area between the property itself and Chesterbrook, that some of these folks, if you can see on that, I guess they've leased property from Rocky Mountain Power who holds this, um, who holds that.
Yeah.
Um, I, I don't know about those leases. And I'm not sure how, the other part of that equation is I'm not sure how the development of this property is infringing on those leases.
I, I mean, I would assume that Mr. Brodsky is, is working with a title company and, and would have a, have a clear title. Um, I don't know if there's, if there's a way to find, to, to get some more information about that. Um, obviously that becomes a legal issue that, that would be pertinent to the developer, um, into those, those, those owners. I don't, I don't know what our role may or may not be in, in that, um, but it certainly is an, is an interesting question.
It is. And, and it's something we, we could definitely look at going, going forward. I, I'm, I don't know anything about the leases. Sorry.
Jared, I think one thing that we've talked about before in meetings over the years too, is with land leases or any type of vacant property, really the only way to control what happens with that vacant property is to have title to that property. And so those leases that are through the power company, um, really aren't in Murray's purview anyway, because the power company owns that property. They could stop those leases tomorrow if they wanted to. Um, yes, you know, if the only way, like I said, the only way to really control what happens with a parcel is to have ownership of it.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point to, um, and, and Will, I, I think, I think Commissioner Lowery's points well taken as well. Well, we'd like to understand that better moving forward so we can answer the questions if they're asked at city council, when they're asked at city council, either way. Um, but, but yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure Mike will be working if he's, if he gets rezoned and he's developing the property, he'll be working within the confines of this particular, of, of the, the property itself. It shouldn't affect those leases, but Sue's right that they're, they're private leases. They don't, I don't know that they have anything to do with the city. That's what I'd like to find out. I'm not sure. He talked a lot about a social contract that we've made to say this is gonna stay this way or that these leases are going to be protected. Uh, that's not out of bounds. There's a social contract, I'm sure. This is an area that has been this way for a long time. We didn't expect when we, um, when we decided that we would support this change as a staff, we didn't expect it not to make any waves or to be broadly accepted. That's, that's not the nature of, of the business that we're in, in, in planning. The, uh, the development of the Parkway Trails, it was mentioned a couple of times, Mayor Pet. That was so widely opposed by so many people. I was working as a planner at the time. The tracks line widely opposed by everyone, now widely lauded. The trailway widely opposed and now widely lauded. Sometimes things are unpopular. They become, they become an asset later on. Not that this is comparable, but it's just, it reminded me of how much opposition we suffered when we were looking at developing the Parkway Trail. Um, but yeah.
Real quick, uh, Mr. Brodsky has raised his hand. Is it okay for him to unmute himself?
Can I just ask one quick question before Mr. Brodsky addressed something? Somebody mentioned the moratorium on mixed use. Can you just speak to how like the difference between this and it falling under the moratorium?
Yes. Um, so, so this is, I think the, I think the reference to the moratorium was that if we, if we cared so much about affordable housing, we wouldn't have put a moratorium in place about mixed use regarding mixed use zoning, right? So the, the main difference between the moratorium and, and this project is that the moratorium is tying my liver and not so much more than this project actually. Now I'm trying to, trying to get through that moratorium. It, it's not, mixed use zoning is not applicable here. We, the, the council put the moratorium in place because they had requests to rezone properties to mixed use. And mixed use carries with it zoning densities or residential densities that go upwards of forty, fifty, sixty, eighty units per acre. And they weren't confident that we were ready to implement those zones in areas of the city outside of the transit corridor. And they're probably right in that. We're, we're looking at making some changes to that, making it fit better. So the moratorium does not have anything to do with this property or, or affordable housing.
I think their question was, or their comment, at least the way I interpreted it was, if we put a moratorium on ha- density, higher density, medium density housing, shouldn't that also apply or that moratorium should carry over to, and like this that has higher medium density housing?
I didn't, I didn't understand it that way. So let me, let me try to answer it according to that understanding of it because, uh, no, because of those same reasons, the mixed use zone carries much higher densities. It's not, it's not a medium density consideration when you look at rezoning a property to mixed use. You are talking about densities of at least forty units the acre under our current zone. A much higher in some of those instances. So, yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't follow that we would wanna, that we would wanna put this kind of property in moratorium or medium density housing in moratorium. They, they were for different reasons. The moratorium was for very specific reasons related to the applicability and the serviceability of those kinds of densities in parts of the city where we just had not considered those densities before.
And then also Jared.
Easily serviced, so.
Can I add also the, the moratorium spelled out actual zones?
Right.
Um, that, that were applied to the moratorium and, and these weren't included in that.
Good, good point. Thank you. I'll mute myself and shut up if you're ready for Mr. Brodsky to talk.
Yeah, let's have the applicant come on. Um, and if any commissioners also have questions for him after here.
Maren, can I just make one comment real quick before Mr. Brodsky starts? I just, I just want to say that I noticed in some of the comments, people felt like the commission was dismissive. And I just want to assure the people viewing or listening to this meeting that we cert-, you know, we strive not to be dismissive. We read a lot of material in preparation for these meetings. We spend a lot of our time, volunteer time, you know, doing these meetings. We don't get sixteen thousand dollar bribes under the table as one email suggested. That, that was laughable. I thought dang it, where am I going? But we, you know, we don't take bribes. We don't talk to developers outside the meeting. At least I don't. I don't think the others do either. Um, everything is up above board and I feel bad that people think we're being dismissive. We certainly don't have that intent. And as far as people being thanked for being at the meetings, I know that, um, Maren has been very, and other chairman have been very, um, good to thank the citizens for their participation in the meetings. Every single meeting, the citizens are thanked. Do we thank each person individually? No, because it's not physically possible to do that. And so we say, we want to thank those that have participated for being here at the meeting. And so we do appreciate, you know, the public comment. We do read every single, I betcha, well, I, I don't know, didn't we read about eighty emails for the, for this? Um, and plus the traffic study and all of the other data and information that has been gathered for this topic. And I want to say that one of the things that we value as a commission and that the citizen should value is all the time that the staff puts into researching the zoning requirements and the legal requirements and everything that's required with every single application that comes in front of us. They have spent many, many hours researching this and meeting with all of the city department. There's a lot of time and effort that goes into every single application by staff. And so, you know, if anything, we should be commending Jared and Susan and Zach for the time that they spend making sure that every application is properly vetted and is legal and is allowable. You know, in Murray, or not, you know, that's, that's a different matter, but it's, when we get our paperwork, it's been thoroughly vetted. We know what every ordinance is that we need to be cognizant of. And they do, they do a great, a great, great job with that. And so, you know, I just wanted to, to throw that out there and say, you know, no, we don't need to be dismissive. We do read every single comment that we get. Um, Susan sends us emails before the meetings to make sure that we're not missing any valuable information or vital information for the topics that we're going to discuss, to discuss. And we all do take this very, very seriously and, um, you know, we're not highly paid individuals. Most of, most of what we do is volunteer because we love Murray. You know, we're all, we're all citizens of Murray. We love Murray, just, you know, just like everybody else. And we do look out for, you know, what's good. And sometimes we have to make unpopular decisions based on what the ordinance calls out or what the legal department tells us, um, we're allowed to do. So anyway, I just wanted to out there.
Yeah, thanks for that comment, Sue. And I, I, um, just to add on to that, I, I do think in some of the comments where they're saying that the city is, or the staff is being beholden to developers. Um, in my experience, it's actually the reverse, is that developers will come in and the staff is holds them accountable to, here is what you're allowed to do. Here's how you can meet those criterias. Um, that they're not bending rules. They're actually withholding the develop to those rules and to those parameters and keeping them in line with what is allowed, not, you know, the, the other way around. Um, and at least, you know, in my experience, everything I've seen. Yes.
Sure, Patterson, can I add to those two comments, please? Um, you know, this meeting's stressful. It's a stressful topic. And, um, I have so enjoyed being part of this commission. One, I want to say, I'm really concerned that it keeps sounding like us and them and no, I've really enjoyed being part of this commission because we have such an active community, the people that aren't on the commission and the people that are on the commission. We're all seem informed, respectful community. We come to these gatherings and they are so peaceful, respectful, informed. I am so impressed with my community. That's why I love being part of this. And it really isn't us versus them. Everybody on this committee was appointed, lives here, will continue to live here, are raising kids here. We are part of the community. We want to make decisions that allow us to continue to be part of the community. So it's not us versus them. You know, we don't, we never here in Murray have where a group attacking one person or attacking a group. We always discuss and teach and weigh the pros and cons and we're open to talking and listening. And that's what's so great about this commission. So I think it's a great opportunity and I respect it. And as we always say, we appreciate everyone who's come out and contributed to the conversation. We say this often. Please go and listen to all our meetings. I really think maybe we should, and I feel maybe Mr. Hall would say this much better than I, um, talk a little bit about the difference between the planning commission and the city council. My short, trying to describe my perspective is on the planning commission, there's ordinances and laws that we're trying to uphold to the best of our ability and make sure they're understood as the community intended them to. And we're different than the community council. And that's why we respond differently than the community council. And that's why you'll see them act differently than us. We're kind of, I don't know, I feel sometimes. I, I have two more things to say. Sometimes I feel like I'm moved to vote for things that I don't support because it's the legality of it that I, it shouldn't be my opinion. It's what the community is society with this ordinance. And, and so I, I, I just want to say that. Another thing I want to say is, you know, generally speaking, my, I, I kind of wince when I hear high density, like, ugh, high density. Um, and so I'm admitting to that, but then I immediately think I need to hear out what the value of high density is, what our planners have considered high density be. And I say that because I'm currently in a situation where the cost of living is increasing so much, I, I'm fearful for my kids. I keep thinking, I need to buy a plot of land. I need to buy a condo, something for my kids. And I hear this discussion, I think, I should buy a condo in a neighborhood, a townhouse, so I can give my house to my kids and still live in the neighborhood. You know, these discussions I think are very informative and helpful. Um, Mr. Hall, do you want to talk more clearly about the difference about planning commission and community council?
I don't know if I could say it any better than you said it. I think you did a, a good job. Uh, ma- many times, so the, the planning commission, I would say this, the planning commission is the city's land use authority. You are appointed by the, by the city to be the land use authority. And in most, most cases that come to you are your decisions to make and you're bound by rules. And so you're, um, you're, you're mitigating impacts, you're reviewing subdivisions, you're reviewing conditional use permits, site plans and designs. And those are all based on the ordinances. This case is a little different. Um, because it's, it's one in which you're just making a recommendation to the council about the zoning that will then govern your decisions and you'll, and you'll have set parameters to work within if the zoning is changed. So in this case, it is slightly different than most of the things that you review, or not most maybe, but some of the other things that the planning commission reviews as the land use authority for changing the zoning, uh, for changing the general plan, for making those amendments, you're a recommending body. So you, and you have more latitude than you have in most of the cases because simply because the decisions you have to make are, are governed by specific rules. We're looking at, we're recommending that you do this because of things that we see in the general plan and support we see for different objectives that we find important in the general plan. So as planners, as practice planners, we support those kinds of objectives. And so we recommend them to you. And as a land use authority, you recommend what you feel is, is the best decision to the council. The council with this kind of decision does, they have more latitude than, uh, for making these decisions, for, for deciding on a zone change. Um, they, they have more latitude frankly, in, in this kind of land use decision. And, and so do you. But as, as citizen planners, that's my recommendation to you is that the general plan supports it. And so I, I make the recommendation that I feel is the best one I can make as a professional.
Okay, I have one, I know.
You, you muted yourself.
I think Travis would like to say something too. So can I add one short thought to that, to that? Um, uh, planning commissions versus city council. I, I, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but sometimes I feel on the planning commission as a land use authority that, um, for example, if something comes to me and I'd really not in favor of it, but I have to handle it according to the ordinances and laws in place, or I could set up the city for a lawsuit in which my tax dollars and my, my fellow neighbors' tax dollars could be spent to defend my decision and possibly lose because I did it wrong. And then I have a project I don't like because I did it wrong. Meaning sometimes I need to follow ordinances to get the best result, even if I'm not a hundred percent in favor of it, where the city council doesn't have that burden sometimes.
Yeah.
Exactly this project, just in general.
In general, that's, that's true. In general, that's true. Not specifically to this project, but in general, that's true.
Yeah.
Just so, just to clarify what you're saying, Jared. I believe what Lisa is referring to, like if we get a conditional use permit, we go, we go through the checklist, right? And we say, it doesn't meet all these things. And if it does, we need to say yes or no. This is not that.
This is, that's exactly right. So this is not one of those cases where you're, where you're beholden only to the ordinance. This, this is not that. You're more like the city council in this case where you can, you can decide what you want to do and there's not the, the same.
Yeah.
However, I mean, I, I want to point out what, we're not elected officials. We're simply wanting to recommend to the city council and an elected official who is accountable directly to the population will be the, the, the body that makes the final decision about, about, about the land use change. We, we simply, we, the, this, I think, and I think it's a, I think it's a really great system that the city is set up. You have, you have a staff of professionals. that the city is set up. You have, you have a staff of professionals that have, have their professional training in, uh, in, who've, who've been trained in, in, in universities and have broad experience in the la- in land use and in, and in zoning. Um, and then you have a, a, a group of citizens, um, volunteers, as Sue mentioned largely, um, that are, that, that, that get to come twice a month and, and get, get to see a lot of different, a lot of different projects and a lot of things that are happening in the city. And really, as Lisa mentions, uh, I, I refer to as call balls and strikes. You know, is it in the strike zone? Is this, is this, does this, does this meet the ordinances? Does this meet the zoning requirements? And if it does, it's an acceptable use. If it's not, then it's not. Mr. Brodsky has proposed something that currently does not meet the acceptable use for the, for the project, for the, for this land. Um, you know, based upon the, the recommend, the, the education, the experience of, of the staff. The staff is recommending, uh, that, that, that this change be, be forwarded to the city council for their approval. You know, it's our, it's based on our, on, on, on each, each commissioner's perspective. And, you know, the, the, the term social contract has been used. And I think that, that social contract, it's easy for us to think of it only applying to ourselves, but the, it's a broader social contract. You know, does, does Murray have a, does Murray have an obligation to provide housing um, in this, in, in the, in the, in the, the real, the real estate economic reality of 2021? Um, that's going to be, that's going to be affordable for pretty people because that's probably going to be a townhome in many cases. Uh, do we, what, what, what is our, what is our social contract? And I think ultimately that's, uh, that's between the citizens and their elected officials, what that, what that looks like. Um, but I, you know, I think our role here is an interesting role, but I, I think it's clear to point out we are not making a decision that will be binding for the city. We're simply deciding if this would be recommended to the city council for their, for their consideration and ultimately approval, uh, to change the, to change the, the ordinances so that we will then, at that point, if that, if that did, if that did in fact happen, then Mr. Brodsky would be back in front of us again to make sure for us to interpret now the, the change zoning for the, for the, for his, for his plan. Um, I hope I'm not just rehearsing this, you know, to, to death to ad nauseam, but I think it's imperative that everyone understands that this group here is not going to be making a, a final decision and binding the city, one way or the other.
And Mr. Lowry, uh, it's also, and Mr. Hall, is it accurate to say too, if we send a recommendation of approval or if we send a recommendation of denial, both will go to the city council and they can make whatever decision they want?
E- either way, we would forward the council, yes, and they'll make the ultimate decision. It's very well said. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would like to just add that the council will have all of this in, all of the minutes from our meetings, all of the discussions that have been said, all of the public comments. If you will have additional times to make public comments and to make your voices heard. But us having these discussions and, um, having these meetings all contribute to the overall, you know, actual documentation of what the city council is getting when they are making their final decisions that we forward on, whatever we forward on. So it's a, like, like Commissioner Lowry said, it's a system built, um, upon each other and supports each other, and that's why we have these layers to it. Um, at this time, um, I know that there is probably more session to be had, but I would like to just, um, if any of the commissioners, I know Mr. Brodsky, um, raised his hand that he has to maybe, he would like to address maybe some of the things that he heard in the public comments. And also the commissioners can ask whatever questions they have for the developers specifically.
Wow. I, I don't intend to respond to all of the, uh, comments I heard tonight. Um, so many of them were, um, refugiations of, uh, information that was provided through our professionals. Um, I do want to comment on a couple of specific questions that were raised. Uh, the one about titles of the property. Um, I can assure you that within ten days of entering into a contract to purchase this property, we researched the title report to understand that the boundaries of this property uh, are owned by the entity under contract to purchase them from. And that, uh, we then conducted a survey of the property to ascertain, uh, whether or not there are boundary issues with encroachments, overlaps, gaps of that nature. We're satisfied that we have the ability to purchase, uh, a property free and clear of any outside incumbencies. My second comment is an observation only. It deals with the moratorium that you have right now on your mixed use zoning. Um, I know that that does not apply to this, that the moratorium uh, has everything to do with the analysis of a current zone in your city. That doesn't work. And I, I have firsthand experience with that. The Granton Square community that you are referencing was developed under the mixed use ordinance. Um, and, you know, Mr. Hall talked about the densities being permitted in that zone of upward to forty, uh, plus units an acre. Uh, we developed, uh, Granton Square with a thirty-four thousand square foot office building and sixty-one homes on about a nine acre parcel. Um, nowhere near that kind of density, for, among other reasons, it's not the kind of housing I build. Uh, but there were, there are a lot of issues with how that ordinance, I'm sorry, how that zoning works. And that, I believe, is what the, uh, moratorium right now is, uh, intended to resolve. Um, there was a lot of discussion about the role of staff and your planning commission. Uh, as a group, you need the wisdom of Solomon. You are frequently tasked with cutting the baby in half or finding ways to avoid that. Um, I, I will tell you that I chair an advisory committee right now, uh, for the Urban Land Institute. Um, that advisory committee is made up of citizens, voluntary citizens in some pretty prestigious position around the, uh, state. Um, one of the very recent discussions we had is the need to provide, uh, plan, uh, sorry, planning, uh, and zoning officials training in how to conduct, um, your roles. I will also tell you that in my experience with Murray, that you have a very highly skilled and very knowledgeable, uh, planning commission. Um, you would be appalled at what happens in many of these planning commissions, just from lack of knowledge. You're well advised by your staff, but even more importantly, as individuals and as a group, you're very knowledgeable about what you do. Um, I, I don't think that it is, I think rather it would be counterproductive for me to try and argue each point, uh, that was raised. Um, and I know that you have a very difficult deliberation to make this evening. Um, I just want to thank you very much for your time, your efforts, uh, and tell you that regardless of your outcome tonight, I appreciate, uh, the efforts that you've put into this. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, so any further question or discussion? Yeah.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for Jared. So, you know, there's this talk about setting a precedence for changing zoning over swath area, or big swaths of the city. Um, Jared, roughly, can you tell me how many acres of A1 land are left in the city? You know, give or, give or take.
I wish I could tell you that right at this moment. Not, not a lot, and the great majority of it, probably, I'm looking at my zoning map up above my computer screen. Most of it's tied up in the Jordan River Parkway.
And how much of it would be bigger than a five acre parcel as a standalone parcel?
As a standalone parcel, not on the Jordan River Parkway, um, almost none of it.
So it's tough to say that this is going to set a precedence where this type of land simply no longer exists within the city. We are darn close to built out. Is that a fair statement?
That's, that's a fair statement. Yeah, I would agree with that.
Okay. Um, and then just one comment to some of the stuff that was said earlier that, you know, that this is the public space. I do want to just clarify, this is not the public space. This is private property and private property comes with developmental rights. Regardless of what zone it's in, there are specific rights that are afforded the owner of that property and that they should be able to exercise those rights where appropriate.
It, it's clear that the, the public is, is, is very passionate. There's elements of the public that are very passionate about this project. Um, I, I, you know, it's, it's my opinion, strictly my opinion, that I think a, a part, that they, that our role in this deliberation is to ascertain if we believe that, uh, it's, if we, if we believe that this, this project or this development, um, is worthy to amend the, the, the general city, the general city plan. Um, I think that the intention of the plan is to provide for positive development that is well thought out, um, that, that contributes to the city's, uh, well-being, contributes, accomplishes the city's goals. Jared, you referenced many times the priorities that were set in the, in the, in the general plan. Do you mind sharing briefly what those overarching goals or objectives were for the, for the plan? For me, that's, um, my, my determination, again, um, I'm, I'm not an elected official. I, this is probably the part of this, this, this part of this, uh, this, this, this duty in, in, in the commission is the one I probably feel the least comfortable personally with because it's, it's my, it's my opinion versus, uh, versus just following the rules. Um, but so I, I, I would like some guidance in terms of, in my, in my way of thinking, my, my vote or my, my opinion is largely shaped on what are the objectives? What are the goals that the city, the, the general plan laid out? And in my opinion, does this meet those objectives and those goals? So do you mind sharing, uh, those overarching goals and objectives?
Not at all. Hang on just a moment, and I'm going to share the screening and that's, that's a, a good. That's great, actually, just one second. So, um, the, the couple that I just have slides for that I wanted, I, I would probably emphasize these more than, than other goals. And that's what we've done here in this, in this presentation. So in the neighborhoods and housing segment of the general plan, uh, the, this, I'm just going to read this statement up in the corner. This is directly out of the plan. I snipped these into the presentation. Murray is dominated by single-family homes and condos with large apartment complexes rounding out the primary housing type. As can be seen on graph eight point one, that's over here on the right. Uh, there is a dearth of missing middle housing types, options between the apartment complexes and single-family homes. We've talked about that somewhat tonight, missing middle housing. It gets talked about a lot. Um, and again, this goal here under neighborhood housing, overall goal for this whole section, this whole element is to provide a diversity of housing through a range of types and development patterns to expand the options available to existing and future residents. I think we talked about the reasons for that goal pretty well, lifecycle housing and affordability. Um, and variety of housing is important for both of those things. So then the objective that this application we feel like supports is this. Uh, encourage housing types, housing options for a variety of age, family size and financial levels. And the strategy support a range of housing types, including townhomes, row homes and duplexes, which appeal to younger and older individuals as well as a variety of population demographics. Um, all of that is, that's, that's an important goal. And we feel like this particular application represents an opportunity to support that goal where we otherwise wouldn't have had it. Now, that's not to say that if we don't, if the planning commission and city council don't decide to rezone this, we can't do this goal anywhere else. Obviously, there's other places in the city where we can support this goal as well. This just represents an opportunity.
Are there, are there any objectives that are in the written plan that are in, that would be, um, are there any objectives that, that are, that, that would be diminished or would not be supported by, by the, by your rec, by the staff's recommendation of the, of these two requests?
That's a great, that's a great question. And, and there are, so there's, there's language in the general plan talking about the stability, protecting the stability of, protecting the integrity of stable, stable residential neighborhoods. Um, and that's a, that's a concern. And many times when we do recommend against a change like this in another situation, we would cite that, that objective, that goal to protect the, the integrity of stable residential neighborhoods, existing stable residential neighborhoods as a reason not to make this decision. In this particular case, again, we have this separation and buffers. We don't feel like this density, not being a, a, a high density, but a medium density and the mix of housing types is proposing, we don't feel like that is going to destabilize this larger residential neighborhood. Our opinion as staff is that this density, this proposal is not going to be harmful to that particular objective. So it's a, it's a good, it's a good question.
For the homes on Chesterbrook, in my, in, in those on Chesterbrook, to me, those are the ones that are going to, probably feel, um, they're going to, they're going to have the three-story townhomes in their backyard. How much space, how much space is in between? Um, and that, and I think that going to that objective of not, um, of not degrading, not degrading or not, not changing, not, not, um, not harming the current development is kind of the heart of, of the, of the concerns that residents have. How far is that setback? Um, how far, how far are those going to be setback in the property line? They have the, the, the power, the pa- the power company easement. How far is someone's home, how far, how far is that going to be from somebody's home, basically?
Without an actual plan, I don't think I can really answer that. Okay. Because it, it could come in with different, different setbacks, et cetera, in a plan. So the only guarantee is the backyard of the homes that exist plus the easement that exists, because that's where his build two line is going to be, even if he was at zero. He's likely going to have more than zero at the property line because you can't really build a residential structure with a zero setback to an open property line. No openings in the walls, et cetera. But it's going to, so the only thing I can definitively say is over eighty feet. Probably, probably more than that. And, and the other thing I would point out, um, Commissioner Lowry, is that really that that number is up to the commission if and when it comes back as a project. Because you have site plan approval over that kind of project. It's a subdivision to say, you're proposing a setback and we don't feel like it's enough based on mitigating the impacts of that height. So the reason that, I, I would, I would say that the reason that I don't think that you can't mitigate that impact until it's as a project, because for example, R1, R18 subdivision, i- if we were rezoning this to R18, yeah, there are, there are twenty-five foot setbacks for that rear yard in the R18 zone. So we would know, for example, that any homes are likely, and they're eight foot side yard setbacks. So let's assume that they have, uh, rear yard setbacks, then they're twenty-five feet from the property line and then the seventy feet to the back. But those homes can still be thirty-five feet tall. So if, if the concern is that height and grade differential, we're going to have to deal with that. Whether we're talking about multifamily buildings like townhomes or single-family homes, either way, it's going to be a question of setback and height that we can't really answer yet because we're not looking at an actual proposal.
But the concern is still that. How wide, how wide is the easement? Is that, is that, as you said, eighty, eighty feet?
Seventy-six point something feet. The range is down to seventy-two feet. It, it's not. Then width, yeah, sorry.
Can I, can I, can I jump into that conversation also, Mr. Lowry, Mr.? Um, we don't have a project in front of us, so we don't know the heights. I know this. I understand this, I mean, but, um, in theory, most of the options have been thrown out there. Currently, the height limitations are thirty-five or forty feet. Um, what, so I want to say it's all speculation at this point. We don't know for sure. And we can, um, put restrictions on heights and setbacks, but, um, thirty-five feet, is that usually a two-story or a three-story home? Isn't that usually a two-story with a basement?
Well, we measure to the peak of the roof. As we talked about with the accessory structures, we measure to the top of the pitch. We don't do the complicated midpoint of the slope, et cetera. We just, thirty-five feet is the tallest you get. Um, and, and, yeah, a lot of homes, a lot of homes are thirty, a, a very common modern home will be thirty-two feet tall to the, to the peak, depending on, it just varies a lot, depending on how far you have to pull the basement up out of the ground because of water tables, et cetera. And I, so I have no idea on this property for that. And, and like, um, Ms., uh, um, Ms. Oliver, I think, was her name, said, there's a, she goes right back there in Chesterbrook, there's quite a great difference. So. Yeah, we'll, we'll have to, we'll have to deal with that.
I think that that's, to, to me, that, to me, that's, that's my, that's what I'm weighing is, is, to me, it's pretty clear that, um, that the, 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 the plan, the, 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 the general plan calls for amendments and, and it calls, it calls for a goal and, and objectives that, that this, this, this project, um, if it were approved, largely meets. I think that for me, the way I weigh is, is are those back neighbors on Chesterbrook? Um, and so I, I, I appreciate Mr. Brodsky, you know, talking about transit windows. I appreciate him. Yeah, I appreciate him having, being thoughtful about that. Um, uh, you know, from, from my perspective, um, you know, I'm looking to the plan to guide, if that makes sense. And, and, and that's, that's kind of where I, where I come down, is I feel like there's elements of the plan that, 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 that support, um, would support the recommendation of approval for this. Um, it's trying to understand that, that, um, that how, how, how those, the neighbors will be right by. It's trying to understand that that the how 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 those, the neighbors will be right by that will be will be impacted that I think is, I have to weigh.
Another, another one of the goals in the general plan is the modern income housing. And so just quickly, again, you'll see that main goal in the middle here, that that overarching goal, provide a diversity of housing through a range of types and development patterns to expand the modern income housing options available to existing and future residents. Assure these affordability targets, using that range of strategies and provide opportunities for affordable homeownership by offering that range of housing types. There is no better way to provide affordability in housing than to provide options of housing types. And that's why we, that's why you hear us talk relentlessly and probably annoyingly about the the missing, the missing middle. So the strategies listed there, we feel like are also supported by this, by this plan. Promote affordable housing options, addressing the needs of low to moderate income households and individuals, and offer options, range demographics and lifestyles. Ensure zoning of residential areas does not prohibit compatible types of housing and support a range of housing types, including townhomes, row homes and duplexes, which appeal to younger and older individuals as well as a variety of population demographics. Again, there's, there's many places in the city. We don't have to balance this checkbook on every single piece of property or in every neighborhood, but this represents an opportunity to provide that. Land use urban design. Provide a mix of housing options in residential zones to meet a diverse range of needs related to lifestyle, demographics, age, household size and incomes. Ensure residential zoning designations offer the opportunity for a spectrum of housing types. This miss mix of, now, we don't have a single zone that that does this, you know, in a way that Mr. Brodsky would would promote here. But we do have his combination of the two zones that does exactly, exactly that. Simplify the residential zoning district designations. We have not done that. But for example, this RM twelve versus RM fifteen business, we ought to resolve that as a city that twelve units per acre, fifteen with this debt residential density bonus that no one is able to meet. We ought to fix that and figure out what 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 density we're really trying to allow. Twelve works really well for townhomes, and townhomes seem to work pretty well for folks. The RM fifteen zone, as as we've said in those we we feel like that zone can allow that flexibility, the combination of these zones can allow that flexibility here and meet this that that goal. So those are the principles we kind of focused on. I'm gonna go ahead and stop sharing that. So I forget that I'm sharing a screen sometimes. I'm sorry. So if you get tired of not, not having a face to to put a voice with sometimes. Those are the kind of things that we're looking at, and I think your 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 question's a good one, Commissioner Lowry, and it lets us talk about this, the plan. I won't show the screen and go all the way back to the nineteen objectives. But the the point is that, well, I'm gonna actually, hang on.
Sorry, I think it'd be great, I think it'd be great to review that, because I think I think that actually is a really good representation of the social contract that we, as somebody mentioned, that that the city came up with back in twenty seventeen.
Yeah, this is, this is a slide that I put in in the original presentation, just to to illustrate the point that there are just in the land use urban, land use and urban form element, there are twelve objectives and nineteen individual strategies to support them. They're all supposed to get considered. They're all supposed to serve some purpose. We didn't, we didn't create them for no reason, but they can't all be applied to every single situation. So we we look at the ones that most that that's, that are most supported or most valid in any given situation. So really, when we look at an application like this, we try to look at it holistically and see what really what's really going on, what's really supported, what's really damaged. So when we see as the statements about not not harming the the viability of residential existing stable neighborhoods, we have no interest in doing that as staff. If I thought that this application as a, as a as a professional and as a person who 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 takes my job seriously, if I thought, if I really believed professionally that this application, that this general plan amendment and zone change application would harm the neighborhood in the way that a lot of people feel like it will, I would not recommend for it. I feel like its isolation can can allow us to do this on this property, serve these other goals without without being a problem for the other objectives that are in this plan. That's just a sample to to give you an idea. And that's just one, one of the one of the elements. There are nine elements in the plan, and they all have these kinds of objectives and strategies associated with them. Just to be, to be clear. So it's not a simple process. It's a complicated thing. So go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, I was just gonna ask, I heard multiple times in the public comments about other developers would come in or be willing to come in and develop this as an R one six, the whole thing. And and I'm just wondering, how realistic do you think that that actually is? And how long this property has been empty? You know, with all of the complicated parts of developing this, how realistic is that, that somebody could come in and develop it as R one six for the whole property?
It's, it's hard for me to say how realistic I think that is. I can only speak to what's happened so far. And thus far, since it's been vacant, we've been approached by two or three different developers who have looked at it, considered it, and and moved on. Considered rezoning to R one eight, like the general plan would would easily support. And they've all, they've all moved on. That's not, I I can't say that that would continue to be the the case. R one six doesn't, R one six isn't, it does get you more, but it doesn't get you enough more to really to to persuade any of those developers that looked at it. There could be developers in the future as prices continue to increase that that would look at it. I I can't say. I can say that there are just a lot of areas in the valley that are easier to do that in, and as long as those cities continue to promote leapfrog development out into the to the fringes, it's gonna be easier to pick up land in the Southwest Valley to to develop on that doesn't have these constraints, that doesn't have these problems. And this is, there's an economy of scale, too. This is only eight acres. It's a, it's a big piece for Murray, but it's not a big piece at the edges of the valley. And so many of those developers will simply apply their their methods to other parts of of the valley instead. So it'll get passed over more quickly than other properties. It definitely has some problems, and not every developer is gonna be interested. I could not say that no developers would be interested in it. I I just can't say that, because everything in Utah is too crazy. So.
Maybe that was an unfair way to ask, but I, I mean, my feeling about property was that people are, developers are gonna come and look at it and go through this same process of it's really hard property to develop. It's very expensive to develop. I need a higher density. And that's the way I can make it work. And then if they can't get that higher density, you know, then they'll, they pass on on the property and it stays as an empty building with contaminated soil for who knows how long until somebody's willing to tackle, you know, the project like Mr. Brodsky is willing to tackle it. So, I mean, it's hard.
That's very fair to say. That I it's, it's not that you can't, it's not that you can guarantee that no one else would look at it for something other than this. But most people that are gonna look at it are gonna ask for higher densities to tackle their problems because they have bottom lines to meet. It does have significant problems. It's not like they're nothing. And it has been vacant for a while. And you're, and you're right. It's a, it's a good point. I should have, I should have made that. It does have a building sitting on it that's vacant now. And the the tendency of vacant properties is to start to become a challenge. And we'll work, if it stays vacant, if it's not rezoned, we'll work hard as the other arm of this city with coenforcement will work hard to try to make sure that it doesn't become a problem. But that's gonna get more and more challenging the longer it sits without being redeveloped. So this does, in our mind, too. That's one of the reasons we supported it. We find support in the general plan that that makes it supportable, reasonable, and it represents a really good opportunity to clean it up and get it and get it developed so that those, that building's not sitting there getting worse every year, and the contaminated situation doesn't start to to degrade. I think it's stable, but you know, no guarantees. So, because it represents a good opportunity for us as staff. So that's why we support it.
I think it's also important to point out that the reason that we're starting to see all of these sites that require environmental remediation or others, there's other significant constraints on the site that require, you know, incredible engineering. We're running out of land. There's just simply not much buildable land left in the city. And so you know, this, this is what's left. And 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 these are our last chances to insert this type of development into the city and and short of knocking down, you know, big blocks downtown or or or, you know, land that opens up there. There just simply aren't these opportunities.
That's a good.
Chair Patterson, I I I think that I, like I, like I said, Jared, thank you for all your time and and to this, and to all of the, 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 everybody who called in, all the, all of the citizens and and to the developer, you know, it's been great to hear, to hear from everybody. I, as I think about this regarding the 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 general plan and and run it through the, you know, reading, reading through the 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 objectives, you know, I think this meets many, many objectives. I think that there obviously are people who passionately feel that this, 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 this will harm their their community. And I I think for those that are gonna be, that could be potentially be very close on Chesterbrook to to, you know, a very high building behind them, you know, that their, their voice should be heard. I'm, I am at a point where I feel like I've made a decision. I don't want to cut either, any other commissioners off if they, there's more debate, but I I would be ready to make a motion if 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 everything else, anyone else has any other, you know, else they want to add.
Any other further discussion or comments from the commission members?
I just have one question about the recommendation. Do we need to delineate the three point three six parcel and the four point six four parcel in that recommendation? So that it's mentioned? I see, I see Travis going, no, we don't need to.
No, I think the the staff report and the exhibits are clear enough that we know how much acreage it is, and there are legal, there are legal descriptions in the files for it. So we know which parts you're you're talking.
Okay, I just worried on that, on the first recommendation where we redesignate the property, so it could apply to the whole thing, as medium density, density residential, without saying, you know, we designate the four point six four as, so we don't need to worry about that?
No, no.
Okay.
So that's a good question, though, Sue. Thank you, but I don't think so, no.
Yeah, I I think this is a, obviously, it's a, there's a lot of, a lot of interest and there's passion on with 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 people. I think it deserves to be heard at the city council. I would make a a recommendation to forward a recommendation of approval. I make a motion to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the requested amendment to the future land use map redesign, the property located at nine thirty-five West Bullion Street from low-density residential and parks and open, and parks and open space to medium-density residential.
I will second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Chair Lowry to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the requested amendment of the future land use map redesigning the property located at nine thirty-five West Bullion Street from low-density residential and parks and open space to medium-density residential. And a second by Commissioner Nay. Are there any discussion on that motion? No? Okay, we can call for a vote.
All right, Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Commissioner Nay?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
I would say that this is a really unique piece of property. There are some real challenges with it that the developer is is going to be challenged with to include the hazardous environment. We've seen some comments about not following the general plan. I I think those are good comments. I think the proposal is really good. However, I still have some concerns that that the request is, isn't quite entirely compatible with the neighborhood. So I'm gonna vote no.
Okay, Commissioner Pearson?
I was gonna say what Ned was gonna say, so I'll just say no.
Commissioner Wilson?
No.
And Commissioner Malkovich?
Oh, Lordy. I'm still having a hard time with it. I love our discussion. I really appreciate what everybody said and what Mr. Lowry said about and Mr. Hall about I I think this proposal is meeting the goals, objectives and strategies in our plan. And we could say it fits. And from a ten-thousand-foot perspective, where we're looking at the fifty-two thousand people in Murray, I think we need this middle and some townhomes. But from the perspective of the hundred, hundred, hundred and fifty residents immediately around it, they are strongly opposed. So I'm extremely torn. I wanted to say abstain, but I'm not sure if that's fair. Can I abstain? I'm still extremely torn. I'm, I don't, I don't honestly know what I'm gonna say. I I know people in the neighborhood and then I know people in all of Murray, right? I think our role is to look at the goals and objectives and the strategies and see if it can meet those needs, whether it really is my favorite thing to do or not. And I think it can, so with a lot of uncertainty, I think I'm gonna say yes. There we go.
Okay, and Commissioner, and Chair Patterson, that you are the tiebreaker.
Yes, I.
No pressure.
Um, I like witnessing Commissioner Malkovich's struggle because I think that we're all really trying to handle and balance these two really difficult, you know, problems. And exactly everything you said, I think every commission member is feeling those same feelings. And for myself, when I look at this individual property, I really try to look at it very specifically to this unique individual property. I want to have it be functioning at its highest and best use as a piece of land. And I do feel like providing the zoning that allows for the housing that we need in Murray as the missing middle and as the general plan, that that this does provide that. And so for it to be at its highest and best use, I I feel like, yes, my, my vote is yes.
Okay, so that's a four to three, then.
And just, just, I have to say, for those who are listening, I mean, that's, this will be something I contemplate for a very long time. Might keep me at night sometimes. So there you go.
So that motion to forward a recommendation of approval passed. And we have another recommendation for the zoning map designation, if you want to have any further discussion or a motion on that.
I'm prepared to make a motion if there's no further discussion.
That'd be great.
Okay. I make a motion that, well, we forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the requested amendment to the zoning map designations for the property address at nine thirty-five West Bullion from A one agriculture to R one six, single-family, medium-density residential and RM fifteen, medium or multifamily, medium-density residential as described in the staff report.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I will second it.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Nay to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the requested amendment to the zoning map designation of the property located at nine thirty-five West Bullion from A one agriculture, culture to R one six, single-family, medium-density residential and RM fifteen, multifamily medium-density residential as described in the staff report with a second by Commissioner Lowry. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Do, do we have to do this again?
We can take a vote.
All right, Commissioner Nay?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
As in the first, the first, as in the first request, I I I will vote yes. I think it should be heard at the city council and and there should be strong public input and debate put forth there.
Right. Commissioner Pearson?
No.
Commissioner Wilson?
No.
Commissioner Hacker?
I would agree with Commissioner Lowry that this is the opportunity of a lifetime for all of our residents to voice their opinion, and they always do. They have for all the time that I've been on the commission. And I will stick with my initial vote and. Uh, and I will stick with my initial vote and vote no as well.
Commissioner Malkovich?
I agree with both Lowery and Hacker, and I think this is a, please have the community go talk to the council. And I'll stick to my initial vote as well, but the council will decide. Yes.
And Chair Patterson? I think that was a yes.
Yes, it was.
Okay. Your mic didn't pick it up.
Holding you in. Okay, motion passes, um, for a recommendation of approval. Um, thank you, everyone. Thank you especially to the public. And, um, I'm sure that you will all be watching closely as this goes to the city council, just like all of my fellow commissioners have said, um, yeah, we're, we're sure that you'll participate in those, um, meetings as well. So, um, with that, um, I think that the only other item of business that we didn't have a chance to talk about before was, um, with some of the restrictions, um, lifting, um, and doing in-person meetings, um, trying to gauge the commission of their comfort and their timeline, I guess. Jared, is that what you would say?
Uh, yeah, with, with, with some of the restrictions lifted, um, you're, you'd be able as a commission to have an anchor location again, to, to be together as a commission. And you'd, you'd be able to have the public come if, to, to the meetings, if you're, if you're comfortable doing that, that that's not a, a public health risk. So it's, it's time for us to discuss whether you're ready to do that or not. The city council is, from my understanding, the city council is going to be having an anchor location but not admitting the public because of concerns about too many people together with social distancing, et cetera. So they're going to be together holding their meetings, but not, um, but not having the public come in yet for a while still, uh, another month, maybe, maybe in July. We don't know, but that's what, what we've heard. You could do something like that. Um, have an anchor location and, and, and see if you're ready to have the public start coming, or you can just go full bore and say, just open, open again for comments and business and, and to do everything live. We'll do, we'll do as staff whatever you want to do as a commission.
I'll start. I feel comfortable meeting as commission and having the residents come to open public meetings.
I concur.
You too.
I just, I, I, I'm going to say I think we'd follow the council's lead.
I'm good with that too.
Uh, I apologize, Mr. Hall. You said that the council is having an in-person with the council and then working into having the public attend, attend in person, correct?
That, um, I, I don't think they're going to have the public start attending in person yet, but they're, they're going to be together as a council at their next meetings. Um, until, probably until July. I'm not privy exactly, but that's kind of the direction they're heading, at least for the interim. They're going to, they're going to do it in a stage where they're together without public and then go to public eventually. Your, your meetings, you know, it's up to you guys.
With the public, do we, do we have space to ensure that they followed COVID protocol and had social distancing?
Uh, and it depends on them, on the meeting. We occasionally have, you, you guys do like far and away the hardest job in the city. When you volunteered for this, you didn't know how hard it was going to be, right? These are, these are not easy decisions that, that you all wrestle with. Council does, has to wrestle with the same decisions. These are the ones that draw bigger crowds. Um, it doesn't take a lot to fill up our council chambers. It's, it's not real big. I don't think a group of more than, than twenty could really social distance in council chambers. It might, does that sound about Riot Zach, Susan, guys that are commissioners have been there before? So I'm, I'm hearing from Melinda that the council's deal is they are going to be back in public in July, but they're going to wait until, they're going to wait, they're going to wait. The city council is going to wait until July to have the public come back to the council chambers, but they'll meet as a council in council chambers until then.
If the public missed meeting, we would have way too many.
Probably, we, we'd had enough registered that I, and that was just registering for the, for the lives, not for live stream, but the Zoom meeting. I would assume had it been a public meeting, we'd have been at capacity flowing onto the hallway, et cetera. This is the kind of application that we, that generates that, those crowds. We can't really accommodate there.
And I think you asked for, oh, sorry.
No, you're correct. Go ahead.
I think you asked for our individual opinions. Yeah. So I agree that I would, it's appropriate for us to meet as a council in person and maybe delay for a couple of months until we have the general public. My only concern is, well, I guess there's two. I'm not exactly sure what the, I guess we will change as, as the guidance changes, right? In case there's another escalation or other things enforced, we would change accordingly. And then second, um, if we, if the recommendation is small gatherings with distancing and we're abiding by that until we have a large topic, how do we deal, because we, how do we handle that? We can't say, oh, we've had six meetings a person, but the next meeting won't be because there's too many concerns.
I, I, I don't, I don't think we can really, I, I, so my opinion would be that the best way to do it would be to say, to not try to, to not try to accommodate it in that way, but to say, at this point, we don't, at the point where we don't care how big the crowd is and, and that, not, not care, that's the wrong way to say it. At the point where we're not concerned with whatever size of crowd it is for health reasons, that's when you're back live, back fully live. And that's, and I guess what the council's banking on is that's probably July, um, at, at this point. Now, they might move that target, who knows? And we would, we could follow suit if you guys decide you want to do it the way the council's doing it. Um, that's probably, um, I think Melinda was telling me too, that the council is actually, um, the council's actually been having an anchor location for, for a while now. A couple of council members weren't coming live to the meetings, but they were participating by Zoom, but most of the council was live, but they haven't had public back with them yet, and they're not going until July. So and we would just revert back if it was a problem, she was saying. That's what the council is saying, is if it becomes an issue, we would just go back to Zoom and say, well, we're, now we're not even comfortable having an anchor location for the, the commission to be in. Um, we can kind of.
I think if nothing else, it, it provides a level of consistency across government. If, if the city council's doing it, we're doing it, it, it gives the public an appearance that it's being fair all around.
I think that's a good point, Travis. That's a, that's a good point. Then everybody doesn't have to wonder, I, I get to go live to the council meeting or to the commission meeting, but I don't get to go live to the council. That's, yeah, maybe that's a good point.
I agree with Travis. I just follow the city council.
Yeah.
So would that be our next meeting? Our?
Yeah, we'll, 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 we would plan to do the, when is the next meeting? May twentieth?
Twenty.
Twentieth we'd be live.
April twenty.
You're trying to kill me. Ned, you're trying to commit histrionism, right? Um, yeah, it would be live May twentieth. We'd get an anchor location. We'd still have to run a Zoom meeting from that anchor location. Zach's thrilled about that. Um, we'll, we'll figure it out as we go. Um, but, but yeah. Does that, does that consensus for all of you? Does that make sense? Is that okay? We'll plan on doing that then, if that's all right. And, uh, thanks from, from all of us to you guys. You do a great job. Um, they're hard, hard meetings, they're hard, hard decisions, but it's really, it, yeah, it's, it's really reinvigorating for me in this professional track that I chose to watch you guys do your job as citizen planners and, and you know, it's tough when everyone doesn't agree, but you do, you do what you do and you do it really well. And I, I appreciate what you do. I really do.
He likes to watch you guys squirm.
What can I say?
I don't appreciate that.
Come on, I do a lot of squirming. Uh, but yeah, I, I, I'm always, I'm always refreshed by these kind of meetings when the public's out and talking about things and, and a lot of those comments that, that were made were, were really heartfelt and you can hear the concern. So I, I'm excited to see it go through the council. I think you guys are exactly on. It, it ought to get talked about at council. And that's where it was going to get talked about no matter what, but they're going to have a great deliberation from this group to consider as they look at that project. So you did your job immensely well. I really appreciate it.
And I hope that the residents are still listening because we all love Murray. We live here and, um, we don't want to do anything to hurt the city versus help the city going forward. So.
Yep.
Well, and today, today it's their back, today it's their backyard, but tomorrow it's our backyard, right? These projects are all over the city. They pop up and, and I think it, you know, it, it, it does impact us from time to time. And sometimes negatively, right, Sue? I mean, Sue has actually had a petition denied before this group. So she, she understands the pitfalls of this.
Yeah, I'm still mad at you, Travis. I've moved on.
I'm kind of glad to hear you say that.
Clearly.
And I'm glad to hear you say that, Travis, too, because I mean, there's been projects that have negatively affected us.
One.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a good point because as a commission member, when I was on the other side of the podium, I had to stand there and smile when my application was denied and I moved on.
I had forgotten that we did. I had forgotten. It does happen.
I've forgiven you all.
Well, thanks again, you guys. You did a good job and, and glad to see so much of the public out and we want to, uh, just in case anybody is still from the public listening. Aaron mentioned that it's going to be going on in the city council and you have your chance to talk again. And it's weird for me to be talking to people I can't see, but you, if you're listening, you're going to see other notices come out in the mail, just like you got from, from the planning commission staff. You're going to see notices come out from the city council staff about that hearing telling you when it is, and it's going to be run like this where you can send in your comments or sign up to, to participate in the Zoom meeting. You're going to see those notices come out again. So we, we won't know when it happens. We don't control that. We'll send them the information when we have minutes. It'll take a little time to get to them and then they'll send out the notice when they can schedule it on an agenda. But you, we will see something in the mail from them, but watch their agendas too. So.
Can you anticipate that, Jared? Is that a month or is it two months? Is it ninety days?
It's usually about a month and they don't, the council will look at it in a committee, the whole meeting first where they're not taking comment. They'll, they'll deliberate uh, in a committee, the whole first and then have a public hearing on it after that. So it'll be a good forty-five days at least before there's a, a hearing on it where they're taking comment, probably a little more than that, if I'm being honest. We're going to be, they, we won't send it over uh, to get scheduled until we have the minutes of this meeting approved. I don't think. They'll want the, want the minutes.
I'm sorry, can I ask another question? And what is the procedure for the council? Are they, um, do they send out notices within this?
Just like ours. They're not as cool as our notices. Ours are better looking, but there'll be notices from the council.
And that'll be on the record for them to read when, when that's in the minutes.
Fantastic.
Hey, great meeting, everybody. Thank you all so much.
Thank you all.
Hours of work into being prepared for this meeting. So way to go. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
You, Aaron.
Motion to adjourn at nine forty-two.
Second.
Thank you, Jared.
Good night, guys.
Good night.